Good evening, everyone, and welcome back to the Costa Mesa City Council Chambers and for our City Council regular meeting of the City Council and Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, June 18, 2019. May we, actually, we are going to have the National Anthem, and it will be sung tonight by Ms. Isabella Moore. She'll perform the National Anthem and then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So please remain standing for the moment of solemn expression following the Pledge of Allegiance by Pastor Christine Knopf of Redemption Church.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Now, please join me as we sing, as we say, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, neighbors. As we're all just coming in from our days, and I appreciate the council how you serve and do your work outside of here and serve us in addition to that, I thought we could just take a couple seconds to quiet our hearts and be present together as neighbors. And I'm reading an appeal to neighbor. Let us lay down our idols of safety, despair, and consumption as we grab hold of the courage, hope, and simplicity we long for. Let us seek justice, mercy, and humility. As neighbors, we have a choice to make. We can choose love. We can choose life together. May we imagine creative ways to love our neighbors where we live and work. May we find our locations and vocations bringing life and meaning to real people in real relationships. Together, we must seek out the root causes that undermine the health of our neighborhoods. Our opportunity is to merge our urban and suburban worlds socially and professionally, including the outcast. Let us rise up and love our neighbor. We've got some work to do. Thank you.
It feels good to be back in our home. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Okay, we have no presentations tonight. At this time, it will be the public comments. Public comments will be heard, and as to items that are not on the agenda, if you would like to speak now, please come up to the podium. We also are reserving the first three seats on each aisle for people who would like to be seated while they're waiting to speak at the podium. And each speaker will be given three minutes, and I ask for your patience tonight as we have our first run at our, well, it's actually my second run, but at our new system of technology. So Ms. Green, you're handling the timer, right? Okay. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Circe. I'm a field representative for Assemblywoman Cottie Petry-Norris. I'm here today to give the members of City Council and the mayor, everybody in the audience, a couple updates in our office. First and foremost, our team is hard at work in Sacramento finalizing a few different budget asks we have, and so we're really excited that we're going to be able to bring back a few million dollars to Orange County for a variety of different issues. So please keep an eye out for announcements when those are officially signed by the governor and everything's confirmed. I also wanted to invite everybody here to a couple events we're having. One is a car seat safety checkup. This is on June 29 at 10:00 a.m., and it's in Irvine, and I have flyers that I'll leave at the table outside the room for anyone that's interested. And then also, something that's really cool is we're hosting an appointments workshop with the Speaker of the Assembly, Anthony Rendon, in Newport Beach on July 18 at 6:00 p.m. until 7:30. And what this is, is they're going to be appointing people to state boards and commissions, and it's open to the public, but you do have to RSVP. It's a really cool opportunity. It's not something that happens in Orange County very often, so we'd love to have you all there, and I have flyers for that as well that I will be putting out on the table. If any of you guys have any questions, feel free to flag me down. I'm more than happy to answer. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Flo Martin, Costa Mesa. The statements that I'm about to make might appear a little hyperbolic, but they're made that way to make a point. Harbor Boulevard crosswalks have become a dangerous area, dangerous to human life. The new version of the intersection of Harbor and Adams has eliminated bike lanes. Drivers turning right don't give a rat's ass about pedestrians either. I'm wearing a high-vis jacket, the same one that I was wearing when a driver making a right turn on Adams to head south on Harbor crossed right in front of me as I got the walk sign. I yelled out to the driver, "I've got the walk signal." He turned his head to the left to check, saw the walk signal, and then drove his 2,000-pound weapon right in front of me to continue south on Harbor. Dang. This scenario happens over and over on my walks to the bank, or the grocery store, or the post office, all the time. Dang. Drivers making a turn north from Fair to Fairview see a new sign, "Turning Vehicles Yield to Pedestrian," both on the northeast and the northwest corners. Did some kid going to Costa Mesa High School or OCC get hit there? Is that what it takes? I'm asking that the city install "Turning Vehicles Yield to Pedestrian" signs on all corners of all intersections on Harbor Boulevard for starters. We don't need any more bloodshed on city crosswalks. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. My name's Cassius. I'm one of your residents in Mesa del Mar. I just wanted to speak briefly tonight, although it's on the agenda, just generally about the process of the budget that you've all been going through, because I want to start off by thanking you all for your transparency, for your commitment, and your work ethic in the community. It's been really hard for me to go out to community events and not run into one of you, not see you out there, not be able to talk to you, have a conversation with you. So with regards to all the criticism and the negativity that I've been seeing, you know, in some commentary online and in the press, I felt the need to come and say that and say thank you for the transparency, because this has been a process going on for many months. The capital improvements budget was even presented to us at the Parks Commission almost two months ago, so this has been out there. It's been a public process. It's been going on for months, and so that's why it really disheartens me when I see the kind of negativity that's going on out there from residents, from people who are dissatisfied, because rather than yell at you from the sidelines, you're approachable. It's easy to come talk to you. And there's a quote I just wanted to read. It's over a century old, but it couldn't be more relevant today. It's from Teddy Roosevelt. The only thing that's probably not relevant is the gender, since we have an all-woman council, but from Teddy Roosevelt, "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at worst, if he fails, at least he fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who know neither victory or defeat." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Costa Mesa resident Kim Hendricks, and I'm here to remind you of an important agenda item coming before you next Tuesday, June 25th. Yes, in one week regarding the fate of another hydrological connection between two vernal pools in Fairview Park. The item is listed with two parts, a year-long agreement as well as an evaluation. The year-long agreement does not need to happen for an evaluation to occur. A little bit of background, the city graded the watershed area in 2005 without any sequoia review. Then, if you watch the January 16, 2007, City Council meeting, you'll see the misinformation that was provided to council members. Although they asked really good questions, they weren't given the proper information. So I think it's important to get the right information to you in time for you to make the right decision. It's not okay for anything other than gliders to be flown in Fairview Park according to the Fairview Park master plan. The runway itself goes right into the hydrological connection between Vernal Pool 1, 2, 3 Complex and 4, and endangered fairy shrimp haven't found there this past wet season, the Riverside and San Diego. Since it's been, and then the city passed an ordinance in 2007 at that January 16, 2007 meeting, and like I said, that was based on faulty information. No sequoia was performed. No sequoia has been performed for this agreement, or they say it's an evaluation. Evaluation connotes positive, I think, feelings, openness, willingness to look, but actually the runway already violates the Endangered Species Act by grading of vernal pool, also the Clean Water Act, and, I'm sorry, but the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. So there are a number of federal and state laws that have been violated, and I know you guys are working hard, and it's hard for you to get all the information, but that's pretty much all I do is gather information, do research, and watch these old City Council meetings to see what people say, because it's really important that we protect these endangered species before they're all gone. We can have any dust bowl in any of the parks in Costa Mesa. Fairview Park is the gem of Costa Mesa. There are, there's Prostratina varicia, woolly marble, many, many species actually are of special concern. There are some animals that are not even there anymore. The Pacific pocket mouse, it only has one brood a year, maybe one to two. It doesn't multiply like a lot of rodents. That's gone. The city decided never to do the alluvial scrub. There's a lot of problems. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening, Council. Rebecca Trahan, District 5 resident. I actually wasn't going to be here tonight, but then, I guess it was Sunday late evening, we had a shooting in my neighborhood, and it's a problem for me because I have noticed, I have notified me and my neighbors since I moved to 19th and Monrovia. We've notified some of the council members a few times, asking for an increased police presence there, asking for, you know, additional lighting there, and we haven't gotten a response. And I know that the media reported that that was a single incident, but it's actually not. I hear gunfire in my neighborhood. I heard gunfire Saturday night practically in my backyard. I probably hear it about once a month, but some of us are just too afraid to either report it, or we know how severely understaffed our police forces, and so we just, we huddle inside our homes. But when somebody actually got hurt on Sunday night, that's when I said, "No more. I have to stand up, and I have to say something." When I can't walk outside with my little girl for fear of possibly being shot, that's a problem, and I want to use it as another means to say, you know, thank God for Chief Sharpenick and for writing the memo that he did, and frankly, thank God for residents like Mary Spadoni who made the memo public, because a working mom like me wouldn't have known what was really going on if they hadn't made that information public. Thank God for Chief Sharpenick's guts, and thank God for Mary's guts, frankly, and I hope that you will reconsider making any cuts to our police department, because we do need to empower them more, and we need an increased presence, especially in my community, 19th and Monrovia. And I did also want to clarify some misinformation that was quoted from a resident, I guess it was in the last council meeting. It was talking about parks, which, you know, I support parks, but there was misinformation quoted about New York City, talking about how in the '70s that it was the parks and the running trails that actually improved the city. I'm very well-connected in New York City politics, and it wasn't. What improved the city and started to turn things around was revitalizing the communities. It was some of the developers coming in and rebuilding, and it was building up the police force. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Donald Domain. The facility looks very wonderful. The reason why I'm here is I'd like to talk to you about resident parking over on Cleveland Street, Paul Arena and all that. We're starting to have the overflow back onto Cleveland Street. You guys voted to have Paul Arena, Dorset, and half of Cleveland. Well, we're starting to have it go up to the top of the street. I have a map here that shows of the overflow of the area of Paul Arena and all that. They're at two capacity right now, so they're starting to figure out that half of Cleveland Street is non-parking resident only. So I would like to talk to you guys regarding that to see if you guys could get the signs to the whole street. We voted for it on our neighborhood. I got all signatures, 78 out of, I mean, I'm sorry, 68 out of 70, and they only voted for half the street. But Dorset's got it, Paul Arena, Coolidge, and then Grant Street got their full, but only, Cleveland Street only got half. So I'd like to know if you guys could put the signs up for the whole street, so that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to read an excerpt from the CMPA email to Chief Sharpenick. The full correspondence is in the back for those who are interested. After speaking with you, we invited Katrina and John to our scheduled Association Board meeting on Wednesday, 5/29. Fortunately, they were able to attend our meeting, and we voiced our concerns for the proposed budget. I candidly began the meeting with a simple disclaimer. I told her I'd spoken with you directly at length and was very aware of the finger-pointing, the lack of communication, and the lack of accountability. I said I wanted to focus our discussion on how the proposed budget would be resolved in order to maintain the health of the police department. Unfortunately, Katrina's immediate response was she knew nothing of the proposed budget or the lack of communication until she received your memorandum. She also said she had no indication there was a discord between the police department and the finance department and Tammy LaTerno. She denied any involvement with any budget meeting prior to the most recent meeting where Captain Glass attended in your presence. Interestingly, she focused on that specific meeting as if to infer some lack of commitment from you, since you did not attend. At least, that's what I perceived from her statement. Since Katrina directed the conversation to pointing fingers in denial, we spent some time addressing that topic. When asked how she had no knowledge of the discord and proposed budget cuts, she said she was not a full-time mayor and was unable to be at the city 24/7. She said, "I still have to make a living." She added, "She could not be available every day, and people don't tell her everything." She denied providing direction for the budget cuts or knowing about them when pressed on the concerns. However, when we candidly asked if Tammy LaTerno and the finance department took it upon themselves to make the decisions, she skirted the issue. She did not provide a specific answer and again continued to deny knowing any of this was happening. As we continued to question the reasonableness of a mayor and mayor pro tem having no knowledge of budget proposals or how the process was going, Katrina became upset with the conversation, stating this was the most aggressive conversation she has ever had with the CMPA. After that, she began telling us we didn't fully understand the budget process and took a rather condescending tone. To me, she appeared to be very defensive when her leadership was questioned. She began discussing the release of your memorandum to the Orange County Register and said it painted a bad light. However, she was not concerned about the possible negative perception of a city running in a deficit. She actually said she was worried about the perception she was not able to properly govern a city. She even said previous administrations would have an "I told you so" moment about her ability to lead. We presume she was inferring to the previous council majority. To us, it was obvious concerns were not with the health of the department, but the perception of her leadership abilities for her pending Senate race. That excerpt ends there, but I would just want to say that is very troubling. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess this is the time to read this. I was going to wait, but, so I'm really kind of confused by this whole line of logic here about what was just read and so the outrage that everyone's hearing. So, "The people most outraged by what was just described by the previous speaker, many of them are the same ones who attacked the mayor and many of the city council members for the support they received from the police and fire unions during the election. Those people also demonized the police and fire unions, implying that officers and firefighters were parasites for living outside the city while being on the city payroll, and declaring that Mayor Foley would sell out Costa Mesa residents by catering to the unions at budget time as payback for their support during the election. But now this group is siding with the union and alleging that Mayor Foley and Mayor Protem Stevens insisted on slashing the police budget? So how does that square with the group's previous characterizations and other recently counted, of the mayor and other recently elected council members as union stooges? So if this group truly believes that the mayor and Protem are responsible for reducing the police budget, why aren't they celebrating? Because wouldn't that be more in keeping with their earlier positions, since they're in effect alleging that the mayor and Protem put residents first during the budget negotiations? But as Mayor Protem Stevens points out, it's not his budget. It's not the council's budget. The department heads submit the budget numbers. And I have no doubt that these same people making all the noise would be raising holy hell if they found out the mayor had tried to dictate an increased police budget to Ms. LaTerno. Can you imagine the storm of outrage, the calls of mayoral outreach, and the loud declarations of "We told you she would reward her union crowdies"? But now everybody's like, "Oh, no, we can't do that, right?" So really, there's no way the mayor and the council majority can ever do right in many people's eyes. This is just something they've seized upon to create a false narrative and of scandal and unrest. So let's focus on the budget process and leave the manufactured crises by the wayside. So, I have another minute or so, but, of course, there's one more alternative that may appeal to this group's penchant for conspiracy theories. That is that they've all been unwitting participants in a carefully managed stage play and have been masterfully manipulated into turning their pathological contempt for the mayor into advocacy for the very police union they demonized during the election. I'm kidding, of course, not because I don't take public safety and the budget seriously, but because I don't take faux outrage seriously. So thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. I just want to say that the council chambers are great. Unfortunately, it took, I don't know how many years to get to this point. I think it was probably at least 10. But the other thing, I would like to see something, a plaque or something acknowledging the service that Brad Long did for the video production, and I think that perhaps there could be a plaque or something that it's dedicated to him, because he spent so many hours here, and there were so many times that you were lucky that he was here and Dane Bora as well, because I saw him wiring together and taping together the equipment so that you could actually broadcast your meetings. So I think that it would only be right that something as a plaque or something to acknowledge all the work that he did for this community, and he was very well-liked by all members of the community, because he was out among the residents, and everyone liked him so much, and I know that a lot of people miss him, and so I would like to see something done in his honor. Thank you.
Next speaker.
I am a little nervous, but I get kind of upset when I see what we should be focused on, being distracted by agendas. And what I'd like to have everyone do is go back to a safety town hall meeting of September 23, 2016, and please watch it. That was the beginning of the seeds of discontent that have just been hounding Katrina Foley. And in that town hall meeting, they introduced to our residents sober living as pillars of our community, and that core group has continued to put out negative information. They tried very hard to get Katrina off of mayor. She ran and was re-elected. Now they're trying another approach. I was very involved with that group. I walked with Katrina. I walked with those people. I thought they were my friends. It's upsetting to have been used. It's upsetting to see people who had once been enemies form alliances for political purposes and to be confusing our city and confusing our residents. These public record requests, they're tools, and they're being used to manipulate my fellow neighbors. Please, don't fall into that trap. Stay focused. You have issues, you have questions, talk to our council members. Don't be distracted by all of this other stuff. Trust me, please, watch that town hall meeting. If you need to know how to get to it on a URL, someone gets me, I'll send it to you. But that was the beginning. They do not like Katrina's approach on the sober living. She's been making some headway. There is progress being made, and it's moving forward, and there is, there are elements in this city that do not want that change to come about. Katrina and her team are working very hard to put this city forward. Please, let her do her work. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. I'm here, I'm your, one of your many resident tree huggers, and I'm actually here to remind you to please save as many of the trees at Lyons Park as possible. We have two districts, we have two District 5 representatives, or at least two of you guys live in District 5, and I know one of, another council member is really environmentally, and Katrina, you are too. You guys were endorsed by the Sierra Club, so please do as much as you can to save some of those trees. Thank you.
Instead of fast times at Ridgemont High, these are strange times at Ridgemont High. I want everyone in the city to remember who wrecked the police department. It wasn't the present council. It was Jim Righeimer and Steve Messinger. They wanted to get rid of the police department and the fire department. Let's just get that right out there. Okay, that's not why I came tonight. They can, everyone's got their own agenda here, but don't forget money, and money makes the world go round, and there's something strange going on here. But anyway, okay, so I wasn't going to come tonight, but something happened this morning. In addition to please everybody in Costa Mesa try to attend the Orange County Supervisor's meeting on September 25 at 9 o'clock in the morning. It's not that hard to find. When is it? I'm sorry, June 25? Sorry, I'm, it's next Tuesday. Get there, be there, hold up a sign. If you don't want that Orange County Airport turning into an international airport, so you want to talk about crime, what happens when you have an international airport? Your crime rate goes up. There's more drug smuggling. There's more human trafficking. There's, we don't want that airport expanded, period. Okay, so then, the east side, which will get the brunt of it, today it came up, I didn't know this, but in 1978 in the general plan, they decided, along with the terrible stack of shacks we have, let's get rid of that out of the general plan, I'm hearing. So they decided that the east side of Costa Mesa, and the west side, all of you need to be involved in this, that the alleys should be 20 feet wide. The alleys are 15 feet wide now. That's enough for a fire department, or a police person, or a sober living van to get down the alley. So why would you want to widen the alleys, and why did we just pave all the alleys within the last five years? A lot of them on the east side- east side? And now you want to... A lot of the residents have embellished their homes, they haven't torn down their older homes, they've made them better, they've gone up to the property line, and now you're telling residents that they have to give up 2 and 1/2 feet of their property? Hello? Nobody wants that. So tell us what to do. We'll get a petition, we'll get it out of the plan. No one on the east side wants their alleys widened, and we asked, "Why?", and they said, "Because they want to have two cars be able to pass each other." Uh-uh. That'll just cause more traffic, more problems. Thank you. Ask the police. I bet they don't want it.
Hi, Cindy Black. I'm gonna read what I wrote, the letter to the editor at the LA Times. "We assume the risk when we elect candidates who have little understanding of city business, process, and procedure. As one council member stated at the last city council meeting, we are still learning, we're learning a lot. While it can be a given that those new to council are familiarizing themselves with the city staff, residents should be able to feel confident that they at least understand the process and procedure of conducting city business. Costa Mesa City Council meetings are not the time to interrupt or interrogate residents who are speaking at public comments. The three minutes allocated to speakers is by law protected speech. Instead, what we are witnessing are speakers being interrogated or interrupted by the mayor or the new council majority. The past council was highly criticized by these people, who are now displaying the same inappropriate behavior. Last Tuesday's meeting was a fiasco of the first degree. The mayor had no control over the proceedings. Councilwoman Andrea Marr took it upon herself to push back on comments made by a resident who had come to voice her concerns at the podium. This is not a time for debate, and Councilwoman Marr should know this. It is a meager three minutes of time where a resident can share their concerns with the council and public, regardless if a council member might not be amenable to them. Later in this same session, the mayor Protem spoke directly from the dais to a resident in the audience, criticizing them for their earlier comments. The mayor demanded an answer from another speaker who had completed their public comments, and then denied that speaker time to answer. One new council member admitted they are still learning. My hope is that they are not learning that this is an inappropriate way to conduct city business. Mayor Katrina Foley has the responsibility to protect and encourage residents to participate in city issues by coming to council and speaking, and informed and engaged constituency is a vital part of our community, and to discourage this is reprehensible. Additionally, the mayor should follow procedural rules and cease allowing a speaker to speak on a consent calendar or agenda item when their comments are unrelated to that item. Time and again, the same speaker comes up and tries to associate sober living issues with whatever it is on the consent calendar that she posed, polled, or an agenda item, and it gets old."
Sorry for the distraction. We have a little bit of a, some kind of a equipment problem happening, but we're going to continue on. At this time, it'll be council member committee reports, comments, and suggestions, and we have a new procedure. If you wish to speak, please add your name into the queue. Each council member is limited to four minutes, and we will begin with Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, everyone, for coming today and joining us today in our new chambers. It feels definitely weird not being at the senior center today, but as you all know, this is not the new normal, so we'll get used to this. I just want to give a quick update on what's up to these past two weeks. I did two big things, in my opinion. I went to the Five Pack meeting this past week, really impressed with how diligent they are with their meeting times. We're in and out in two hours, so I want to commend the entire committee for being really punctual and efficient with time. As I gestured with one of the members there, I hope we are as efficient as they are in our meetings. And a bit more close to home, I actually attended Pomona School PK graduation, which is Parent Institute for Quality Education. So, our school district obviously realizes there's a need to educate parents in West Costa Mesa about what steps they can take from grade school to have their children be prepared for high school and college. And I had the pleasure of popping in a couple times to these meetings, and the pleasure of speaking at their graduation for the parents. It brought tears to my eyes, knowing, seeing parents truly investing in their community, investing in their children, and trying to find out what's the best way they can help promote their children, our residents here in Costa Mesa. I want to share a few things as well. It's been a great chance to meet and residents in my district going to these meetings, and one thing they do want to do going forward, and something I'll be proposing going forward with the Fire and Police Department, is having a member of the team go to their PTA meetings going forward. There's a big desire in the community to have a community watch, and they want to know what steps they should take to form one in their community. I think it's really engaging and hopeful seeing citizens rise up and want to address issues in a community. And to me, this is an example of what people can do when they get involved. You know, they can change the direction of their children's lives, they can change the direction of their neighborhood. And as we go forward as a city, taking the budget and all other items, let's find ways where we can improve our city. Ways that we can step up and say, "How can I make my city better?". Because a lot of times, it comes from us, the citizens and the council members and residents of our city. So, that's all I have for today. Thank you, guys, for coming to our first meeting, and hopefully it will be your last meeting.
It's Member Marr.
Oh, so we're, okay. I thought we were in the order we were gonna... Nope, okay. So just a quick thank you, I think he's still running around, but obviously Mr. Dane Bora has been working very, very hard to get council chambers up, and doing training with all of us, and so huge thank you to him, although he probably can't hear me at all. And then the other person I want to thank is Ashley Thomas in Recreation Community Services. We had our first-ever Costa Mesa Art Walk on Saturday, which is something that I've been talking about for a long time, so I'm so excited we finally had one. And that's in large part thanks to her hard work. And then the last thing I'll say, because I know there's a queue, I can see there's a queue if people want to talk. Next Thursday, June 27th, at 8:30 a.m., I'm gonna do coffee with a council member at the Starbucks on Baker and Fairview, before anyone gives me a hard time for that being outside of my district by 500 feet. It's the best way to accommodate a number of people. It's also where most of the people who live in my district stop for coffee on their way to work. So hopefully you can stop by 8:30 in the morning, next Thursday, Baker and Fairview. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Mansour.
Thank you. Very briefly, to the gentleman that spoke about parking issues in your neighborhood. Sometimes, and I can't recall the specific instance, but normally when we vote on things like that, staff has the option sometimes to expand it within a certain boundary, so I don't know if it's gonna need a new voter, another vote or not. But what you can do is maybe speak with Mr. Seth Araman, or email me, and we can get you an answer to all of your questions. I'm happy to help you on any issue, if you want to email me or contact Mr. Seth Araman directly, we'll get an answer to your question.
I'll email you. I'll email you.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, I appreciate people speaking up about the budget. I know that it's a difficult issue. We have a lot of concerns, changes, and whatnot that people are bringing up. I had asked for a study session tonight, and apparently that's not hap... Obviously, it's not happening, but the reason I asked for that is because it's more of a discussion format, and I think that would have been a better, healthier way to go about it. I understand some of the reasons why we may not be having that, obviously, tonight, although I don't necessarily agree with all of them. It will be interesting to see if there is a final vote on the budget tonight, or if we continue it for another week or two for a vote. Of course, we have to vote for it by the end of the month, but my intent was simply to give the public more time for input, more time to ask questions and so forth, but it should be an interesting discussion tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Guinness.
I would like to second Ms. Rafakis's comments about some sort of acknowledgement for Brad Long. He served the city well for several decades, and his heart was really here with the city, and it would be nice to have some acknowledgement of his service to the city, possibly someplace here in the council chambers. Vector Control. I'm the rep to the Vector Control District from Costa Mesa. The first positive West Nile bird of the season has been found, not in Costa Mesa, but the first one for Orange County was found in one of the inland cities. This is a month earlier than last year, so we really need to be gearing up. So once again, do not have any standing water on your property. If you have saucers under your plants, dump it out. Remember, dump it or drain it. Don't have a bucket with water that you kind of forget about. Survey your yard, because West Nile virus is a very serious disease. It can lead to paralysis, it can lead to death, and if we just take care of our mosquito issue, then that should take care of that. So rather than have to spray poisons, let's just keep all the water dumped out. Also contacted by the Agriculture Department requesting that we publicize citrus disease. There unfortunately was a citrus, a cutting from a citrus that was brought into this country a few years ago, and it has spread, and it is spreading fast. If you have citrus, do not take it out of the area. If you have, particularly if you have a citrus plant, do not take it out of the area, do not take citrus plants from other area into our areas. There are quarantines, but people tend to not be aware of them or ignore them. But please, if you have citrus from your yard, keep it in your yard, give it to your next-door neighbor, do not give it to your friend in San Diego, or in Fresno, or something. And also, if you have a friend in Fresno, or San Diego, or Riverside, particularly Riverside, or the San Gabriel Valley, do not bring it home with you. So this is a really serious issue. It could devastate one of our state's major industries. So we're being asked to publicize the need not to move citrus fruit, citrus cuttings, citrus plants around outside of the immediate area. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna save most of my updates for our next meeting, but I wanted to address some of the comments that we received during public comment. Thank you for folks who came up and talked about bike and pedestrian safety, parking issues, and trees. I have meetings later this week to address those issues. They are things that this council, I think, has both prioritized and is working on. If you hear gunshots in your neighborhood, I'm assuming the chief will agree with me, please call the police. Thank you. Okay, so that is the area that the speaker spoke about is actually my neighborhood as well. I do walk my dog in that area at night. I've been, I've always felt pretty safe, but certainly if I see anything, I'll call the police and encourage any residents anywhere in the city, especially if you heard gunshots or believe there's a crime happening at the time, please do call the police. My experience has always been very great with the response time. Can we get, regarding the HSS contract that it sounds like we'll be hearing next week, can we have that staff report sent to us ASAP, just so we have some time to address that? That's for the city manager. I agree with the really great idea about a plaque or some kind of commemoration for Brad Long. I think that's a fantastic idea. And that actually reminded me of an old agenda item that I'd like to see come back, and that would be a city naming policy for, or a naming policy for city buildings. We have the new Neighborhood Community Center, I think, coming up soon, and I'd like to possibly look at an opportunity to name that building. That was something that came up, I think, a year ago or so. Last thing for the city manager, can we get an update, not tonight, but maybe in the next week or so, on the progress and timeline for the airway shelter? Thank you. Nope. Turn on.
Mayor Protem Stevens?
Yes. So, thank you to Dane Bora. I'd like to say to all the people who spoke, you sound marvelous, and you look marvelous. I'm looking at you, if I ever take my eyes off you, it's only to see you on camera. You all look and sound great. And you made some really good points. I think we should follow up on the sign idea that Ms. Martin said. I think that that's a really good idea. Mr. Demain on Cleveland, I think we can work with you on that, and we should follow up on that. And of course, the idea of naming something or having some commemoration of Brad Long, who did so much for us, and was gone way too soon, was a great idea. Now, to some fun stuff, the Costa Mesa American Little League, A's, major A's, and minor B, Red Sox, won the TOC. That's the Tournament of Champions for the District 62. Districts, that's never happened, the two... Here, you guys can clap now, you can clap. It's never happened in the history of Costa Mesa Little League. The last time anyone from our city won the Tournament of Champions was the Angels in Costa Mesa American in 2005. So it doesn't happen very often, and it happened two times in one year. That's like the equivalent of getting two holes in one, in one round of golf. It's very impressive. Also, sticking with the fun, I have to talk about the Independence Day event. Now, we do have one meeting before, council meeting on, before that, but I'm gonna promote this event. It's gonna be a great event. It's on the 3rd of July. It's at the fairgrounds, right across the street, from 5:00 to 11:00. Our headliner is the Tijuana Dogs, which is like the best cover band in the area. Opening act is Moxie Anne. Everything's free. Free admission, free parking. The firefighters are giving away 1,000 free hot dogs, free frisbees, free glow sticks. Did I mention things are free? Okay, yes. So come have a great time. It's your community celebration, and we're having Harley Ruda, our congressman, is gonna read the Declaration of Independence. So it's gonna be quite something. It's your country, it's your city, celebrate it. And we have a great opportunity to do that. Finally, my last comment is to acknowledge that our next meeting, which is on the 2nd of July, is our first meeting for our new city manager, Loriann Farrell Harrison, which means today is the last meeting for our active... What? Well, we have one more. Actually, we don't, because if we meet again, it will be an adjourned meeting. So this is officially the last meeting. So let's give it up, just like we did for the Little Leaguer, Little Leaguers, for the great, hard, tough, difficult work that was done by Tammy Laterno. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to report that I had a great meeting with the Orange County Coalition of Aviation Companies, and their representative, who is former supervisor Bill Steiner, he was filling us in regarding what's happening with the plan for the airport expansion. And I would encourage everyone who can to come out on June 25th to the Board of Supervisors' meeting at 9:00 a.m. Also, you can go to the city's website, and you can see on the website, there's some updated information. We have a tab regarding the airport, and there is a petition there. We are trying to gather as many signatures as possible, hopefully get to 10,000 by June 25th. It's well over, I think, 7,000 at this point. So it's very helpful to share that, and I'll be presenting that at that meeting. I also had a great meeting with Randy's Donuts, and this is a donut company that is out of, I think it's out of like Long Beach area, and they want to move to Costa Mesa, and they've actually already leased a property in Costa Mesa, and so they have one of these large donuts that becomes like a place for people to come, and tourists to come and take pictures. So it will be great to improve a little area that's a little tired right now, so I'm excited about that. Also attended the Costa Mesa Art Walk at the new library. That was really fun, and I got a lot of feedback from people. They really enjoyed it and are looking forward to other events. And I want to ask that Ms. Barlow, when you do your report, could you also give a report as to why this meeting is a scheduled meeting and not a study session? As you know, I didn't have anything to do with that decision. And then if we could also, Ms. Laterno, if you have this, if we could give the phone number for people to call, and if we could make some kind of a flyer and get that passed out for people to call for if you see or know of... out for people to call for, if you see or know of someone who's experiencing homelessness, and instead of the call going directly to the PD always, if we could call the shelter and the, there's a certain number that people are supposed to call, and I don't think it's easy to find on our website, so maybe we can, can share that more broadly. And then if we could, for our staff report for the meeting on the 25th, if, if we could have, Ms. Green, if you could email us that January 16th, 2007, a link to that so we can watch that video, that'd be helpful. And I know the council already addressed Mr. Domain's questions. And then Mr. Seth Araman, maybe you can share with the council whatever this issue is about the 20-foot wide alleys. I'm not familiar with that. You don't have to do it right now. And then I just want to welcome our new interns. We have some new interns that are working this summer in the mayor's office, and we have one here tonight. His name is Jake. Welcome, Jake. And then congrats to all the graduates. You know, it's graduation week. It's very exciting, really just wonderful to see all the young students that many of us have known for many years going on to pursue their dreams. So, congrats, graduates. Moving on, Ms. Laterno.
No report tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Barlow?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Other than explaining why we're doing it this way, I, I don't really have anything else to report tonight. At the last meeting, there was a question about potentially continuing the budget, doing a continuing resolution, having the budget adopted in July. I was asked a question about whether we could adopt the budget at a special meeting, and my answer was yes. Unfortunately, what I forgot, and in my, if you remember, I left early because my partner was in the hospital that night. But my, our finance director reminded me that one of the items that is related to the budget, and quite important, is the fee schedule. That requires a public hearing. We had already noticed the public hearing for tonight. It was too late to notice it for next week so that we could simply make this a buddy session, a study session tonight. So, the only way that we could do this without having to completely renotice and push the agenda into July was for us to call, have this as a regular meeting, focus on the budget, and be prepared to adjourn to an adjourned regular meeting next week and handle the other items as well as anything left over from tonight. So, my apologies for the confusion, and I hope we have a wonderful meeting tonight.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to, we have no consent calendar tonight, so we will move on to public hearing. City Clerk?
Thank you. This item is adoption of fiscal year 2019-2020 appropriations limit. Tonight, the presentation will be by Ms. Amber Haston, management analyst.
Thank you. Ms. Haston?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council.
And I apologize, I don't mean to interrupt, but I want to make sure because this is our first time. So, council, if we are going to allow Ms. Haston to complete her presentation, if you have any questions of staff, if you could please add your name into the queue, and since we now have this queuing system, I will just call on people who are in the queue, okay? Thank you. Please continue.
Pursuant to Article 13B of the California State Constitution, or more commonly referred to as the GAN initiative, the city is required to annually establish an appropriations limit, which is different for each agency and changes annually. The purpose of this limit is to control an agency's ability to spend general tax proceeds each year and ultimately lessen the impact or tax burden on taxpayers throughout the state. The state of California allows for two different methods of calculating the appropriations limit. For fiscal year 1920, the city elected to use the population growth of the city and the California per capita income growth, resulting in the proposed limit of approximately 245.3 million. With the city's anticipated general tax proceeds for next fiscal year at 120 million, the city will continue, as in prior years, to fall under the limit. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed resolution establishing the city's fiscal year 1920 appropriation limit of 245,308,059, as required by the constitution of the state of California. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Seeing no questions, I will move to open to public comment. If you'd like to speak, please line up at either of the podiums, and as I mentioned before, there's also seats reserved in the first, what is that, a column? Yes. Okay. We have no speakers. We'll close public comment, and council. Oh, okay. I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page with the police department. We're on the appropriations limit at this time? Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. You might want to sit there, and we'll be on that one next. Okay, close public comment. Council, is there a motion? If you could put your name in the queue, if you liked, or, sorry. Okay, you have to go to the home panel. If you want to make a motion, push the button, make motion. No, I don't. Okay. Motion by Chavez, second by Mar. Mr., Councilmember Chavez, is, what's your motion? Just because it's not.
I move to, I mean, just following team, right? Okay. I move to approve the resolution.
Okay. And Councilmember Mar, seconded, did you want to speak to the item, Councilmember Mar?
No.
So, I see that it looks like there's a request to speak by Councilmember Guinness, but it's not, right? Okay, I'm going to reset. I don't know. Yeah, you can. You just hit, you took yourself out. So, okay, we'll continue on and call for the question. I mean, you have to activate the voting. Okay, call for the question. It still says voting is inactive. We apologize. We're just learning. I know. Careful, I'm not allowed to say that.
All right. We apologize for that. We'll get this worked out, so we will have to do a manual vote. So, I'm going to just go down the line.
All those in favor, raise your hand.
Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six. Any opposed? Any opposition? Okay. Let the record reflect there. Six votes aye, and Councilmember Mansour is voting no.
Okay. So, before we go to the next item, can we take just a moment to make sure that the equipment is working?
Yes.
If you go to Presentations, council, you can see the vote, and the, the community should be able to see it as well.
Did you do that yourself?
Okay. Okay, so are we ready to move on, or is it working now?
Yes, we'll bring, allow the presentations.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item. Ms. Green, can you clear the request to speak list because it's not letting me clear it? There it goes. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Fiscal year 2019-2020 budget discussion and adoption. Staff presentation by Ms. Kelly Telford, Finance Director.
Okay, again, council, at this time, we're going to allow Ms. Telford to complete her presentation. If you have any questions, if you want to just get your name in the queue, and then we'll call on you according to the names in the queue after she's finished with her presentation. Ms. Telford?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council members. Tonight, I'm here to present to you for discussion and adoption, the 2019-20 operating and capital budget. The budget development process officially started in December 2018. In January 2019, council held a special meeting that included establishing goals for the upcoming fiscal year. These priorities are listed in the attached Budget in Brief, as attachment number one. Following those meetings, representatives from all departments worked diligently to prepare the preliminary budget. On May 14th, the preliminary budget was presented to council and the community at the budget study session, where we discussed the budget development process, challenges faced in the process, and details about the budget presented for discussion. At the conclusion of the study session, council requested we return with recommendations for the potential reduction of the use of general fund reserves. Since then, staff have worked to identify options for consideration in an effort to reduce reserves. These are included in the proposed addendum, which is attachment two in your packets. On June 4th, city council requested an additional opportunity to review the budget, which is the intent of the meeting tonight. This presentation will focus on the preliminary budget with the proposed addendum factored in, which is the recommendation before you tonight. At the previous budget study session, we communicated a number of challenges that we knew we would face during the budget development process. This included a slowing economy, reductions in, I'm sorry, revenues that were projected to increase by only 2% compared to the 5.6% that was anticipated between fiscal year 1718 and 1819. We knew we needed to budget for the new homeless shelter operations, as well as the renovation of the permanent shelter site, which was purchased earlier this year. We knew we had an increase in litigation costs that we needed to factor in, and we also needed to factor in increases in salaries and benefits, particularly related to MOU increases totaling more than $6 million, a minimum wage increase required by the state of California effective January 1st, 2020, and we had an increase in the employer contribution percentage for our pension plans. These last three bullet points, the shelter, the litigation costs, and the salary and benefit increases, are unavoidable costs, costs that are not discretionary and could not be reduced in the preparation of the budget. During the budget process, the initial calculation showed that revenues were lower than projected costs. In order to present a balanced budget, we needed to identify ways to increase revenues, reduce co, reduce costs in the departments, or use reserves. Ultimately, we utilized all three methods to present the budget before you tonight. The preliminary budget that was presented at the study session was presented using 3.15 million in general fund reserves. The proposed budget before you tonight, which includes a number of addendum items, proposes balancing using only $437,000 of general fund reserves. This was accomplished by reducing capital improvement projects and deferring the decision on certain staffing recommendations, which I will go into further details in a few moments. It is important to note that this maintains the current staffing levels and maintains all service levels. There were no staff reductions, no programs were reduced, and the community can expect to continue to see the excellent service that the city provides to them. At the May study session, we discussed, discussed the proposed use of 3.15 million in general fund reserves. This slide shows the balancing measures that were originally proposed. They include paying $2.8 million for the 2017 bond payments out of the CAN ordinance set aside, which is in accordance with the ordinance itself, retention of $2 million from the CAN set aside, essentially keeping this in the general fund, using $1.4 million in reserves to fund renovations of the homeless shelter, and using $1.75 million to fund litigation and one-time shelter operating costs. Before you tonight, the proposed balancing measures, including the addendum, are still utilizing 2.8 million to pay the 2017 bond payments out of the CAN set aside, retention of 3.38 million from the CAN set aside, keeping this in the general fund, that was increased from 2 million from the previous slide, transferring 1.15 million from the CIP fund, which is from completed projects and a funding swap that we'll go over in a moment, and ultimately using $437,170 in reserves, which will fund a portion of the renovations to the permanent shelter. If approved, again, this would reduce the use of reserves to only $437,000. In this slide, I want to summarize the addendum by showing you four proposed changes, which are shown on page eight of your agenda packet. If approved, this will reduce the general fund reserves from three point, sorry, the use of general fund reserves from 3.15 million to the 437,000 that I previously mentioned. In the next few slides, we'll walk through each individual one of these. The first item on the list is the proposed deferral or elimination of projects that were included in the preliminary 1920 budget. These include deferring the design on the reconstruction of Fire Station Number Two, reducing the budget for the West Side Restoration Project from 250,000 to 125,000, reducing the building modification budget by 75,000, deferring the first floor kitchen improvements, reducing the new sidewalk missing link program from 100,000 to 50,000. It's important to note that the remaining 50,000 is funded through gas tax, through a restricted revenue source. It would also purp, propose deferring the second floor lobby and counter improvements project and deferring the West Side Costa Mesa City Offices Study. If approved, this would provide an additional 1.38 million that can be kept in the general fund. Again, this would increase the CAN ordinance recapture from 2 million to 3.38 million. We would essentially reduce the, the 6.5% set aside by this amount. The second item on the list would transfer savings achieved on a number of projects that are either complete or near complete in the CIP fund. The projects listed here are anticipated to have savings available, which would be transferred back to the general fund, used for operations, which would ultimately reduce the use of reserves. These include Fire Station Number One, the Placentia Bicycle Signal Project, Bristol Street Medians, Pinkley Park Playground, and the Davis Field Parkway. If approved, this would free up $525,000 that could be transferred back to the general fund. The third item on the list would essentially complete a funding swap for the Fairview Park Storm Drain Project, which is currently budgeted in the CIP fund. Currently, there is a CIP project for the Newport Mesa Unified School District Field Improvements in the Park Fees Fund totaling 1.24 million. This project hasn't started and represents the first phase of a much larger project. We are proposing to reduce the project budget to $615,000, which would free up $625,000. We're proposing to do a funding swap and move the Fairview Park Storm Drain Project to the Park Fees Fund using this reduction. This would end up freeing up 625,000 in the Capital Projects Fund, which could ultimately be transferred back to the general fund to reduce the use of reserves. Coupled with the 525,000 from the previous slide, a total of 1.15 million would be available to transfer back to the general fund. Before I walk you through the last item, I want to let you know of a correction in the preliminary budget. You may have noticed the current agenda report shows 12 full-time positions being proposed, six new positions and six part-time positions. Re-classified. six new positions and six part-time positions, reclasses to full-time. This is what was included, this is an increase in what was included in the preliminary budget book. This is a correction related to a proposed reclass for the Human Resource Analyst, which was included in the City Manager's budget totaling $44,000, but was accidentally left out of the supplemental schedules, which include FTE count, the budget message, and thus the agenda report that was presented at the study session. This agenda report includes that reclassification. Again, the numbers were already included, the appropriations for the increase were already included in the budget. With that being said, the last item on the addendum would defer making a decision on the above staffing recommendations until the close of the first quarter, when further analysis can be performed. It would defer three full-time new positions and three part-time to full-time reclassifications. All positions were evaluated by staff based on priority, cost, and whether or not they generated revenue. While staff believe all position requests are important, these positions were determined to be less critical, and a decision could be deferred until the close of the first If all items in the proposed addendum were approved, the operating budget would total $153 million for all funds. As you can see, this is an increase of 5% over the fiscal year 18, 19 adopted budget. The proposed fiscal year 1920 budget does include accounting corrections, which impact the Fire Department budget and Finance Director budget, sorry, Finance Department budget. So these increases are a little bit misleading, but they've been footnoted in the slide. Also included in the department operating budgets is a change in how we apply the vacancy factor. The city has used a vacancy factor to accurately reflect budgeted salaries and benefits in prior years. However, this was shown in the non-departmental section of the budget. In accordance with GFOA best practices, the vacancy factor has been assessed at the department level based on historical trends. Included in the proposed budget is an 8% vacancy factor for the Police Department, a 6% vacancy factor for the Parks and Community Services Department, and a 5% vacancy factor for the IT Department. In addition, on May 23rd, 2019, the Police Chief distributed a memo to City Council requesting additional operating and capital budget funding for fiscal year 1920. These requests need to be fully analyzed to determine the entire cost of each item. In addition, many of the requests are technology-related and need to be evaluated in conjunction with the IT strategic plan, which is expected to be completed in the first quarter of fiscal year 1920. In light of this, staff recommends deferring a decision on the Police Department's requests until the IT strategic plan can be reviewed by City Council and a thorough analysis of funding options can be performed. Finally, from the start of the budget process, the primary focus was to maintain staffing levels in each department and maintain service levels to the community. If approved, the proposed budget, including the changes in tonight's addendum, would include 490 full-time positions. The City Manager's Office is the only department that shows a decrease, however, this is misleading. It is not a true decrease because the reduction in FTEs represents the transition of the Neighborhood Improvement Manager and two Community Outreach Workers to the Parks and Community Services Budget, which is where the homeless shelter operations now reside. Effectively, no departments had reductions in staffing in this budget. In conclusion, we recommend you approve the preliminary budget resolution, including the proposed addendum, which also includes a provision to exercise the emergency exception set forth in the CAN ordinance based on the anticipated economic slowdown and unforeseen circumstances. Approve the fee resolution, increasing fees for the Finance Department and Development Services Department. Approve the financial and budget policies included in the preliminary budget. Approve the resolutions adding three new classifications. Approve the resolution increasing part-time rates. And direct the City Manager and Finance Department to report back to council no later than November 15th on the status of the first-quarter operating results, provide additional recommendations on the staffing changes, and provide recommendations on how to address the Police Department's operating and capital requests. That is the conclusion of my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
The only person, people in the queue? Okay, here we go. Councilwoman Guinness?
I have several questions. First off, what would be our total required under CAN if we fully funded it?
I believe the number is just over 9 million. I can get that for you.
And then, net, how much are we funding, both in terms of how much money we're putting in minus how much we're transferring out from leftover money from other projects that didn't, where we had a little extra?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
So, on net, we're not putting in the 9 million. And then, we're also, as I recall, there were a couple places where we had money left over from projects from prior years, transferring them around, you know, park fees, whatever. So what is our net that we're putting into the capital account? And that includes not only a transfer that we may take from the general fund into the capital account, but subtracting out any money that's being transferred back into the general fund from the capital account?
The second part of your question is 3.13 million. We would effectively be transferring 4.28 million for the CAN ordinance and bringing back 1.15 million, which is from those completed projects that had cost savings, for a net of 3.13.
So we're at about a third, then, of where we would be under the ordinance?
I think that'd be reasonable to expect.
Okay. The homeless shelter. There is no account under Parks and Community Services that actually provides for neighborhood improvement in our draft budget. And there was another part of the budget, I wish I could find the page, I have so many Post-its in here, but in any case, where there was a reference to including the homeless shelter under the Housing Authority budget, which is a separate budget. Number one, what is our schedule on the Housing Authority budget? When will we be seeing that? When will we be adopting it? And then the second part is, where is neighborhood improvement and operation of the homeless shelter being funded?
The Neighborhood Improvement Division is now under Parks and Community Services. However, it has been grouped with the operations of the shelter under the Housing Authority. So it is not, the dollars associated with the people is not included in the Parks and Community Services budget.
So, when do we adopt the Housing Authority budget? And also, based on what we saw in February, the annual operating cost for the shelter was estimated to be about 2.5 million. I have a copy of the staff report here. The Housing Authority budget is typically considerably less than that, under a million, in fact. And we have other obligations from that particular account, including purse. And there's only 3 million in reserves in the Housing Authority. So where is the Housing Authority going to get the money to run the shelter?
The Housing Authority isn't anticipated, from a funding perspective, to run the shelter. We do anticipate certain funding, certain outside funds to become available.
To fund the shelter.
Yes. The Housing Authority, in the future, we anticipate will qualify for certain grants that may or may not be available under the city's name. It would be under the Housing Authority's name. At the mid-year Budget Study Session, we proposed an item to move the operations for both the Neighborhood Improvement Division, as well as the Shelter Operations, to the Housing Authority, to more accurately reflect the operations that are taking place. We only are planning on utilizing, right now, $250,000 of the Housing Authority money, you're talking, the reserves that you're mentioning, the fund balance, because that's what's currently allowed per the Health and Safety Code with the state of California. The remaining balance is anticipated to come from 460 or so thousand from the SB 2 dollars. There's a little bit of donations and the subsidy from the general fund, which is included in the non-departmental section of the budget before you tonight. The Housing Authority budget was, we were anticipating bringing to you tonight, so you would have already hopefully seen and adopted it prior to this meeting, but because of the recent changes with moving, having more time to discuss the budget, it's coming before you on the 25th.
Okay, so the 2 million operating subsidy to the Housing Authority is already included, is already reflected in our budget numbers?
In these, yes.
Okay. And then, I appreciate all the work that you did in getting the additional detail out there, too. But going back to the staff report, we are looking at, on page eight of the staff report, it appears that the lead mechanic actually would save us money. So why would we defer that position?
This was actually a lengthy conversation with Public Services, Finance, and the City Manager. Because even though the year-one costs are actually higher to outsource this, we wanted to allow for time to be able to factor in potential future costs. It has been a concern of council and of the community, the increase in pension costs, and we wanted to allow for time. We're not saying we don't need it, we're just saying, give us a little bit of time to do some additional analysis, so that we can take into account the full impact and provide that to council at a later date.
Okay, because I'm thinking, you know, 100, if we could save $133,000, then I kind of want to do that.
And it's important to note, too, that this is if we were to defer it for the entire year. It was really the only way for us to quantify in numbers. If we were to bring back the recommendations by November 15th, as anticipated, the cost differential wouldn't be as high, if we were to recommend this in November.
And then, it's proposed to use park fees for the storm drain in Fairview Park. And we've received comment at the podium from residents asking us to do the storm drain in the park because of flooding in their area. And there have been alternatives presented. I believe Mr. Campbell presented one, I think Ms. Hendricks provided one, Ms. Black had presented some information about actually having the drain located outside the park. Now, under the Quimby Act, the fees are collected on the basis that we are expanding our services. We are either adding new facilities, new land to serve a growing population, or we are somehow providing capital improvements to a facility that enables us to handle more people. The storm drain appears designed to serve the surrounding area, as opposed to expanding the ability of the park to serve the population. And as a matter of fact, there has been a lot of discussion in the committee as to whether the storm drain might actually damage the resources in the park. So I'm questioning the legitimacy of using Quimby fees for that particular facility. Has there been a legal review of that? Because it seems like that would fall outside Quimby. And as a matter of fact, I would suspect there are people who are on the Fairview Park Committee who would be perfectly happy to just put that money back into the general plan and not build the drainage thing.
We did consult legal. We met with Public Services, the City Attorney's Office, and the Finance Department, and discussed the full scope of the proposed project, which was adopted or approved in previous budgets. And it was determined that this is allowable under, for the Park Fees Fund. A large portion of that is because it's not just addressing the storm drain, it's also addressing accessibility to the park. While it's fully on park land, it also provides for improvements to the drop-off location where people enter the park on the south entrance. And that was determined to be able to increase the accessibility and numbers related to accessing the park.
So, this also includes the Pacific Avenue turnaround?
Madam Mayor, if I can answer the question. This is actually for the storm drain. And based on our review, and we have the data for that, and our city engineer can answer that if needed, the watershed of the park is the one that's turning towards the residents. So it's not the other way. So it is the park water that we are trying to address here.
So in what way, though, does this increase the capacity of our park land to serve our population? That's what Quimby fees are for. That's the whole point of Quimby fees. I think we may need to review that, just to reassure ourselves that it is indeed consistent with the legal purpose of the Quimby fees. And going on, I did have some questions regarding workload indicators. We had some in our materials already, but there were a few other things, which I emailed, which I don't need to go over here, but I think what I'm looking for is, do we have expensive programs where we don't really get that much bang for a buck? If we're spending a couple hundred thousand for a program that has 20 participants, then maybe we need to rethink it. If we're spending a couple hundred thousand for a program that has thousands of participants, then that's probably, we're probably doing pretty well. But I also have been going over the detail on the accounts, and I was kind of surprised to see in the Equipment Replacement Fund, which apparently is a practice that we have been pursuing in the past as well, that we're spending a lot of money on things that really aren't equipment replacement, they're more equipment maintenance. For example, tools, ratchets, uniforms for people at the corporate yard, safety boots for people at the corporate yard. This is all out of the 403 account. It's kind of odd, or not the 403 account, it's the Equipment Replacement Fund. But I was kind of taken aback by that, that we really haven't spent it to, we replace equipment, we've several times rented generators. I hope these aren't the generators that we had for the Snoopy House, although I don't really know. But my question is, we've apparently been using the Equipment Replacement Fund for maintenance purposes, for our vehicles. However, in our last budget, we had account 50920 Fleet Services under Public Services, and it was fully funded under the general fund. And it says maintains and repairs the city's fleet of 360 fire, police, general-use vehicles, motorcycles, highway equipment, generators, trailers, and other miscellaneous equipment. And this is the budget that we adopted last year. The amount budgeted initially was approximately 3 million. However, apparently, based on this budget, the amended budget took that up to 3.8 million. I had asked for expenditures out of the various accounts, and wouldn't you know it, there's like 9,000 entries on there, but somehow expenditures out of the 50920 account were not included with that. And what I can't figure out is if we had, and we, this year, we changed the name of that account to Equipment Maintenance, although it's still the same account number, it's And the description is a little different in here, but similar to what was in last year's budget. So my question is, what did we do with close to $4 million in Fleet Services money? And why are we using the Equipment Replacement Fund for what is essentially Fleet Services? And I'm not expecting an answer on that right now, but I would certainly expect an answer before, I would want to vote on it.
If I may. I believe you're talking about Program 50920, which is in the, is one of the programs under the Public Services Department. In Public Services, in the 18, 19 adopted budget, there was proposed funding totaling, sorry, there's a lot of scrolling, 3.2 million out of Fund 601, which is the Equipment Replacement Fund?
Now, see, the budget shows it is coming out of the general fund, not out of the Equipment Replacement Fund, the adopted budget for this year.
Do you have a page number I could refer to?
Well, it adds into the total for the department, and then the, it's reflected in the department total. the department total. And then going back to last year's budget, it's reflected in the General Fund total. I would have Revenue to do appropriations. So we have the General Fund, and we have all the different departments, and the total is reflected in the items that are coming out of the General Fund. And I'm not quite certain how that worked out, but, and it was also kind of weird, because that was the only thing that I couldn't really follow.
Councilmember Guinness, I think that there's a misunderstanding. Are you looking at last year's budget or this year's?
I'm looking at last year's budget and trying to figure out where the $4 million that was supposed to be in Fleet Services went to.
Can you answer that question, Ms. Telford?
So the capital purchases, which is the actual replacement of vehicles and equipment, as well as the maintenance of the fleet, has always, to my knowledge, been included in Fund 601. On page 238 of that budget, I'm sorry, 214 of that budget book, it shows 3.2 million was adopted out of Fund 601, which includes, I believe it was, this is really testing my memory, being that I wasn't here.
Oh, I'm looking at the preliminary.
I believe this includes 1.3 million in actual equipment, just under 900,000, I believe, for the actual maintenance, which includes the tools that you mentioned, it includes the personnel costs associated with the mechanics and the department that services those vehicles, as well as the cost of outsourcing certain repairs that can't be done in-house. It's always been included under 601, and the 1920 budget is consistent with previous years.
Okay, because I'm still trying to track what happened, because basically, I'm seeing, unfortunately, I brought my last year's preliminary instead of adopted, so that's why my numbers are a little different. But, yeah, that's close enough. But it appears that there's a gap somewhere, and I'm just trying to figure out the gap. And then going back to the Housing Authority numbers, the governor, I think the governor's signing it, anyway, the budget that was just passed has approximately 650 million for homeless services, and another, then the previous one had 500 million for homeless services. How optimistic are we that we might get some of that?
Very. So as you're aware, the governor has passed the budget, there is a number of additional bills that need to pass behind it, that ultimately determine how a lot of that funding gets disseminated down to local jurisdictions. We will continue to follow those bills. We're still hopeful that we're going to be able, and optimistic that we're going to be able to secure the $2 million that we were anticipating for Lyons Park Playground. And we're hopeful for more. We just don't know at this time until those bills are passed and we understand better. We will also stay on top of the homeless funding to ensure that we do our best to secure funding for Costa Mesa, particularly for the shelter renovations for the airway site, but also for ongoing operations, as it is a significant cost to the city.
Yeah, well, a lot of it is for acquisition or construction, too. So we may be, the sad part is, we may be ahead of the curve enough that by the time the money is released, we're done. But let's hope that it's released quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that money goes to the county, and then it flows to the cities, unfortunately. Councilmember Marr.
Yeah, so going back to that lead equipment mechanic position, so that number is positive, which means that's money we will be spending, not saving by hiring the position, right? I think we were talking about it backwards.
Correct. It's, we would need to add to the budget, the dollar amount that's in the addendum, in order to be able to outsource that, the services, rather than hire someone to handle a lot of it in-house.
Got it.
And it's more expensive to outsource.
Okay, it's costing us more when we need to outsource. Is there a reason we didn't include, we didn't make the recommendation to include the position, then?
Again, it came back to really making sure we did the analysis to factor in future costs, not just what we expect this year's costs to be. I honestly expect that we're going to recommend, when we approach November, we'll recommend moving forward with that position. There just wasn't enough time to do the full analysis and to reach out to all third-party options to find out what that true cost would be.
Okay. And we've talked a lot, I don't have that many questions, because I've spent hours and hours and hours with you, but can I clarify that the citywide fee study is in this budget for next year?
That is correct. It is a part of the Finance Department's increase.
Okay. And to your knowledge, this might be a City Manager question, but we do not have any funds allocated for a climate action plan, or for an energy management plan, or anything that would substitute for not having an energy manager, is that right?
That's correct. Not at this time, but it is one of the first-quarter items that we need to address.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rendles.
All right. So Councilmember Guinness and Marr already ticked a few off the list. I'm going to try to go in order here. So starting with the staff report, staff report, page three, the paragraph just before General Fund, the staff report notes, there were also a number of accounting corrections that ultimately reclassified counts. Some of the text says, you know, the accounting corrections fix or improve accurately recording revenues and expenditures. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? What are some of the things that you found or are continuing to explore?
Sure. This was a hard one to articulate, because it gets into the weeds and the debits and credits of accounting. But I'll do my best to explain it a little bit better. The best example I can give is the one that I used at the study session related to the ambulance transportation program. When the budget for fiscal year 1819 was adopted, it included 1.2 million for revenues related to that program. In reality, it was 3 million in revenues and 1.8 million in expenses. We had netted the two together and just recorded that net balance as revenues. But that's not proper accounting, because those are true costs of running that program. This was one of the items that we recommended correcting during the mid-year budget report back in February. And in this budget, it does reflect the proper accounting change. So you'll see in one of the earlier slides here, the Fire Department budget actually increases by 3.7 million, but that's a little bit misleading, because 1.8 of that represents the costs associated with ambulance and Whitman billing related to that program. We had a number of those changes. The ambulance program is definitely the largest, dollar-wise. The Finance Department had some of those. We were, for sales tax, for instance, all of our fees that we pay HDL for auditing were netted against sales tax revenue or property tax revenue. But that wasn't accurately reflecting our tax revenues. We had a revenue account, a contra-revenue account, which is another technical accounting term, for HDL for business licenses. They host a web-based version where you can renew your business license online. We have to pay every time somebody does that. That was included in the revenues, rather than really being included in the expenses for the department. So the Finance Department's budget has been increased from the expenditure side, but the revenues have also increased accordingly. So it's a dollar for dollar in the budget. It just makes these numbers look a little bit misleading.
Okay, I think another thing that confused me early on was some of the kind of changes in where you put money between account pools, right? Which made it difficult to compare previous years to what was being proposed for this year.
I believe you're referring to the workers' comp, employment, I can't remember the third.
Yeah, I think there were a few different examples of that.
That were previously in the salary and benefits group, which are now included in maintenance, oh, professional development, that were previously included in salaries and benefits are now included in maintenance and operations. And that's because they aren't true benefits to the employee. While they are associated with employees, they're really a cost of operating a department. So they just moved from, we call it above the line in salaries and benefits, to below it.
Okay, great, thank you. Staff report, page nine, in the text under Police Department Memo, the second sentence says, "The requests need to be fully analyzed to determine the entire cost of each item." Can you explain that?
Sure. We started looking at each individual request in the Police Department's memo, and one of the things that we always do anytime there's a request, particularly with technology, is work in conjunction with the IT Department to make sure that the numbers that are included not only include a projection for equipment, but also include costs associated with implementation, as well as staff resources for the IT Department to be able to coordinate that. This happens with all of our programs. For instance, this year, for the Desktop Computer Replacement Program, which came before Council at the last meeting, because we don't have the manpower to replace the volume of desktop computers, we proposed to use a third party to assist us with that, but that's a cost of implementation. We want to make sure that those kinds of costs are included when we bring back a recommendation to Council for consideration. And they have the full scope of the project.
Great, thank you. And you are, or the various teams are continuing that study now to figure out full implementation costs of additional items requested?
Yes, we are working on all of that.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, on some of the positions, so there was this HR analyst position that, my understanding is, was included in the budget, but just left off the list in our previous study session. Can you describe the need for that and why not to defer that position?
I can't answer that. That has to do with the recruitment efforts, and we need, if you'll recall, at the Council's retreat earlier in the year, I talked about the need for an additional staff member in HR to assist with all the recruitments. And we don't just do recruitments in HR, we do a lot of other things, too. And we really need that position in order to keep these positions moving forward and keep the recruitments going.
Okay, thank you. There was a couple of questions today on the network admin position. This was, I think, a reclass from part-time to full-time. So the cost impact, I think, of deferring that is just under $9,000 here. But you had described to me that that's, and that one is not actually an annual cost savings, because I think there was a plan, already sort of a planned deferral of when that position was intended to be brought onboard. My question is, does the proposed deferral right now of that position affect kind of the targeted bringing onboard of that position if we were to approve it in the first quarter?
If I could speak to the deferral piece first. The $8,500 that's included in, it's actually in Attachment 11, I'm not sure if that matters. The ongoing cost of eliminating the part-time intern and the part-time network administrator, and changing those positions to a full-time network administrator, is $36,000, a little more than that. The reason it was 8,500 is because we knew that if this was approved, we wouldn't be able to fill the position immediately. So it didn't make sense to fund it for 100% of the year. By our estimates, the deferral actually, based on the recruitment timeframe and the funding, they would be able to fill the position starting in October of 2019, of this year, if it were approved.
If it were approved tonight?
If it were approved tonight, and we started efforts right away, we anticipated being able to get it filled by September, October timeframe, which allowed for nine months worth of funding. This kind of coincides with the recommended deferral for a decision a little bit later on. We don't anticipate that this would create a significant impact on the IT Department. The two part-time positions are already vacant, so those would need to be recruited for anyway. This would just postpone the decision an additional month or two, and that would be one of our top priorities from a recruitment perspective, in conjunction with the proposed IT strategic plan that will come before you in the first quarter.
Okay. One of my, and maybe this is a question for the department head, I see him out there. One of my sort of burning memories from the January meeting where we heard reports from the department heads, was just really how strained our IT group was. And I think, I remember one of the stories was that where we did have interns or part-time staff, it was really hard to keep them onboard. So is the plan here to recruit for a part-time person before the first quarter review?
I think the plan would be to keep these positions vacant until we came back to Council. And the recommendation would go in conjunction with the IT strategic plan. The very preliminary draft that I have seen does provide for recommendations for increased staffing. At that point, we would bring back a recommendation to Council to approve the position, eliminate the part-time programmer analyst and part-time intern, and we would recruit for the full-time position. Because you're absolutely correct, these positions tend to be difficult to fill.
We are recommending you go forward with a new full-time programmer analyst, too, though, in IT now.
Right, there is that, okay. And the, so these, this November 15th date is the proposed date to review some of these deferred positions. Is the expectation that we will have seen the IT strategic plan ahead of that?
Correct.
Okay.
Or at that meeting. We anticipate that being a study session.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, keep working down this list. Okay, so right now, with all the proposals in front of us, we're looking at about $440,000 in reserves. And all of that, my understanding is 100% of that is for one-time renovation costs for our homeless shelter at the airway site, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so sort of building on one of the questions Councilmember Guinness had, what, I'm going to ask you to give a likelihood, knowing some of the money that may be available, is it possible, is it likely, that grant funding or other funding that may be in the pipeline could offset those costs?
I would like to think, with Costa Mesa being one of the only local jurisdictions, doing something to directly address the homeless issue in Costa Mesa, that we would get funding from the state. A lot of other cities are either doing more regional efforts or are holding off on decisions. Where we're actually taking action, you know, the Council has approved the temporary shelter right here in our city to address our city's homeless issue. I think we have a good case when we do grant applications for being able to utilize that as a selling point. I'm optimistic, but without knowing how the governor plans on distributing the funds and ultimately getting them to the local jurisdictions, you know, if it goes through the county, it's a little bit harder of a process for us. We would prefer direct allocation, since we do have our own shelter. But that's still yet to be seen, whether or not that will happen.
Okay. And with the size of that site, you know, one of the strategies was to try to rent some of the space and generate some revenue that way. That's already built into these numbers, is that right? That goal of renting and getting some revenue in?
Correct.
Okay.
We're anticipating, we've had a few conversations, they're still conceptual in nature, but we are anticipating leasing out a portion of that space in the budget. I believe it's 200,000 in rental income is budgeted for 1920.
Okay. Couple more questions. So on the planning fees, I had noticed that, so the discussion is that it's been a long time since we've updated these fees. We're, I can't remember the exact numbers, we're on an annual basis subsidizing, I think, almost over a million dollars in costs in the planning department for these fees. So the goal is to increase the fees to get closer to cost recovery, but we're still short of full cost recovery. My understanding is that this is just an initial step, in that the planning fees that are in front of us tonight would also be included in the more comprehensive fee study, is that correct?
That is correct. This is just a first interim step in the process. The evaluation was conducted recently. However, we do plan on including these fees, along with all city fees, in the cost allocation plan and fee study that would be conducted if the budget were adopted. We're actually working on that scope of work now, in hopes that you do adopt.
Great, okay. And is the, is it realistic, or is the expectation that that fee study would be done for the November 15th review?
I would anticipate that we would have, more than likely have a draft, but I don't anticipate it being finalized. We're hopeful that we would be able to bring it to Council in December, with the anticipation of, we need two meetings for the ordinance, plus the waiting period, so we're hopeful that we'd be able to get these implemented by February timeframe.
Okay.
We just have to wait and... We just have to wait and see what the workload of the consultant looks like and the timeline that they give us. But I would push for this to be an urgency.
Okay. And if we had a draft, we would at least have a sense of what that subsidy is now and how much we might be able to recover?
Absolutely.
By updating our fees to full or near full cost recovery?
Absolutely.
Okay, good, thank you. In the slide deck, can we, actually in the future, I know this is a standard template we have, can we get slides numbered in the future so that can help our reference? So in the slide deck, you showed the, by department, the adopted previous year to this proposed budget and the percent increase and decrease. So quite a few, well, let's see, the city manager's office, city attorney's office, IT and public services, for example, have decreases in their operating budget. The other departments have increases. Can you just give us, share a few examples of, so we have operating decreases in some departments, but we are saying that we were very careful to try to maintain the level of service that we're providing. So can you give a few examples of how we're achieving some of those cost decreases while maintaining levels of service?
Sure. In the city manager's office, it's probably important to point out, I put the slide back up for the benefit of the community and the council. In the city manager's office, it's showing an increase of $740,000, I'm sorry, a decrease. While the Parks and Community Service Department is increasing by $760,000. Actually, I take that back, that's not included here. The decrease in the city manager's office is partly because of really going through the city manager's office budget and being thoughtful with what we budget. There were some previously budgeted items that were there for just-in-case scenarios, and this is actually with all of the departments. A lot of the just-in-case money has been removed because we needed to contract and we didn't want to touch employees and we were really trying to not reduce services. When we worked with the city manager's office, we discussed the contingency fund at length and how that has been utilized in the past and how it will be utilized moving forward. We really anticipate that contingency fund to help with the just-in-case. Some of the decreases, for instance, in the IT department fund, this is partly because of the vacancy factor being assessed. They also had some additional funding in their budget for just-in-case for computer replacements, monitor replacements, and it was quite sizable. The IT department had been running surpluses in, I believe it was the past four years. So we sat down, we really looked at their accounts, we were thoughtful in ensuring that we were budgeting for what we really needed and not taking up funding that ultimately may not be needed by IT but might be needed by another department. For public services, we met with them and we discussed service levels, we talked about how we address community issues. There are many times where, you know, we get a phone call from a member of the community and public services is really good, they immediately respond and correct the issue. We're going to need to be a little bit more thoughtful, we'll need to go out, do an assessment, see if it's something that we can repair maybe rather than replace. That's a part of where this decrease is showing because public services has quite a bit of just-in-case money because they maintain every city facility that we have. There were a lot of, there was a lot of effort by the departments to look for more cost-effective ways to do business, really focusing on the need-to-haves rather than perhaps the like-to-haves. I've seen and heard of things happening in departments where they're no, we're no longer providing coffee. It may come as a surprise, but most of the departments provide K-cups, the Keurig cups, coffee cups, the individual-use cups, to the employees rather than us having a general kind of communal coffee pot like you would think of traditionally. Some of the departments have said we'll provide the Keurig, but the staff can bring K-cups. I know, I'll pick on development services a little, I know they purchased the reusable, the self-use K-cups where you can put your own coffee grinds in it and make coffee, which is a part of the sustainability measure. They've also addressed water and whether or not we provide bottled water. And they're just looking for more effective ways, reducing the like-to-haves so that we can keep the need-to-haves and not reduce people and not reduce services.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I add, since one of those budgets is mine? I've tried very hard to look at my budget, especially knowing, you know, as we're going forward, that we needed to reduce expenditures, to really streamline and make my office more efficient. So we think you're still gonna get great city attorney services and you're gonna get it faster and cheaper, which I know sounds stupid, but...
Sounds great to me.
That sounds good.
Do you have anything else?
Faster and cheaper sounds good. I have one more question, and this is, both councilmembers ahead of me addressed this. This is on the equipment mechanic position. So I understand why deferring that position could actually cost us money for a year and why you're making that recommendation, but I heard for the first time tonight you say that your expectation is that we would probably still end up with a recommendation to hire this position? So if the annual cost of deferring, the annual cost of deferring this position is $132,000, deferring that for a quarter, if we decide to hire that position later, will cut, if that's a $34,000 decision tonight? A quarter of the 132?
Potentially, yes. Part of the, why I would anticipate that this recommendation would come forth in November is because a part of it has nothing to do with money at all. It has to do with customer service and getting our police and fire vehicles back on the streets as quickly as possible. I know public services has expressed concern that if we were to outsource this position, there is a high likelihood that our vehicles would not be made the number-one priority, which it's an indirect cost, non-monetary cost of outsourcing. I think we need to evaluate what those options are and whether or not that would come to fruition before we make the recommendation, but it is something that council can change tonight if there were a substitute motion.
Okay, that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mansour.
Thank you. A couple of initial questions. Page five of the staff report, almost at the bottom, the public affairs manager to assistant city manager, it's just a title change, there's no dollar amount. Can I just get the who and the why, who, what, why on that change?
It's just correcting, so that was a working title of the person that was previously in that position and the appropriate title. We just never had it, we never had the job description, so now we're creating it for the first time. So it was already there, we're just creating that title officially, so it's no longer a working title, it's a real title.
Okay, thank you. And then on page seven at the top, West Side Restoration Project, what specifically is or was that?
Madam Mayor, if I can answer that question?
Yes, Mr. Seth Raman?
So the West Side Restoration Project was initiated many years ago. There was a consultant that was hired to look at West 19th Street, West 17th Street, to see what kind of beautification, what can we do to improve mobility in that area, especially pedestrian access and bicycle access in that area. So it's to bring some beauty into that, into the neighborhoods.
Okay, a variety of beautification and safety issues?
Exactly.
Okay. And then just for complete clarification, I thought I heard this was taken out, can you tell me if the energy services manager is or is not in the budget?
The energy services manager position is included in the preliminary budget document that was presented at the budget study session. However, it has been included in the addendum as one of the positions to be deferred for a decision at a later date.
Okay, so depending on how we vote tonight, basically?
Correct. In the $437,000 number for use of reserves, it is not included.
Okay.
It is not funded.
The $230,000 or so for chief of staff and the three aides, that is still in the budget, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, those are all my comments for right now, I may have a few more later, thank you.
Mayor Protim Stevens?
Yes. So my first question pertains to a capital improvement project. It's on 167 of the budget book, it's number six, and it's city hall elevator modernization. Are you with me, Mr. Seth Raman? Okay. Now, that is a $700,000 item, and is that being paid by the general fund? Okay, yes.
Yes.
So hypothetically, let's say we decided to defer that project, then that would eliminate the use of reserves, because $700,000 is more than $437,000, correct?
Correct.
And then what would happen with the balance?
It could, it would go back to...
Reserves?
It could either go back to reserves in the general fund, or it can, we can pull just the amount needed to bring the use of reserves in the general fund to zero and leave the balance for reappraisalation to other capital projects down the line, leave that in the CIP fund.
All right. So now, Mr. Seth Raman, let's talk about that project for a bit. You see the effect it would have on our budget, kind of positive effect, wipe out the need for reserves. So I take that elevator quite a bit. I know that a, I've never been stuck in the elevator. I'm not aware of anybody that's been stuck in the elevator, and I also happen to know, I happen to know, I can't, sorry, I can't see her. I happen to know that an elevator modernization, as opposed to elevator maintenance and repair, is a major decision for someone who owns an elevator. Why is it that we need to do the elevator modernization in this fiscal year? And what would be the consequences to the city of Costa Mesa if we deferred it for one year?
Madam Mayor, if I can answer that. So this elevator is original to the building, so it's built in 1967. And the last time it was upgraded or the processors inside was changed was 1995. I think we are living on borrowed time right now. Many of our staff have been stuck on elevators over, you know, over the past few years. And there was time when the elevators were down for extended periods of time. We had one elevator functioning, then we would fix it and then the next one would go down. Somehow we were able to manage so far. I hate to see a time when we would lose those elevators. The parts for those are no longer available. The last time we had to fix something, we had to go on eBay and try to get parts on that one. So it's way past its service life. It's something that, you know, we are a service organization. We need, you know, our customers, our residents come up to second floor, third floor and fourth floor, and I don't want to see them walking up on the stairs and neither the staff. So if something goes bad, you know, that's what we need to be cautious of, and it's better to take care of when they're working rather than when they're gone.
Raise your hand, have you been stuck in the elevator? Anybody out there? Raise your hand, don't be afraid.
If I could just add one more thing, so in addition to being a person that was stuck in the elevator, the last person to be stuck in the elevator was a customer about 10 days ago. So it is a problem, they're down all the time. It is a problem. I agree with Mr. Seth Raman, I think we're living on borrowed time, and the ADA issues are important.
It's very important.
If the residents can't get to us, we need to all leave our offices and go to them on the first floor, so...
Okay.
Mayor Protim Stevens, anything else?
Yeah, no, I, so regarding the can set aside, it seems to me, just thinking about the different projects that we've been working on over the past year, with the fire station, the library, now purchasing the homeless shelter, various medians that are happening throughout the city and have happened in the last fiscal year, it seems to me like we spent quite a bit of money in the last fiscal year, fiscal year 2019, on capital improvement projects. Approximately what percentage? You know, the can percentage is 6.5. What was our percentage in terms of the actual spend in this fiscal year, fiscal year 2019?
Madam Mayor, I need to look into that number, Mayor Protim Stevens. It's something that, we think, this year we did spend quite a bit. We are probably on target of spending more than the $6 million.
More than 6.5%?
More than $6.5 million this year.
6.5%?
6.5%, sorry, you're right. The spending varies over every year, but I know with the library project, we have definitely spent a lot of that money and the fire station too. So we did spend that or exceeded that, 6.5%.
Right. I guess what I'm getting at, and the reason I ask the question is, if we're being asked to reduce the 6.5 by some amount in order to not use reserves and to balance the budget, perhaps it would be good to know if we spent more in the prior year and so that there's some type of leveling or averaging out over time. And so I don't know, can you just think about that and maybe get back to us on that? Okay, so, couple more. When we, first of all, we use November 15th as the date to come back and do a report on these various things and make decisions. Why did we use, why did we pick November 15th and could we do it by October 15th?
The reason that the November 15th date was selected is we anticipated being able to close the first quarter of the fiscal year, which is September 30th, give finance time to close the books for the quarter, post all of our journal entries, make sure payroll for the quarter was fully posted, and allow us to conduct analysis to really come back with solid recommendations, not only on these staffing positions, but the requests made by the police department, to really be able to develop a funding plan moving forward. That's gonna take a little bit of time once we close the first quarter. We also want to see where we're pacing from a revenue perspective, if we were to come back. So we anticipate closing by, about October 20th is usually when we close. We would need a little bit of time to do the analysis, and we do anticipate it being a study session that we come back at, so it wouldn't be the first meeting in November, it would be the following week, which would be the study, the second Tuesday. I believe this is the Friday of that week, the 15th is.
So it's proposed that the November 15th meeting where the report would be received would be a study session, and then in terms of voting on some of the items that are being considered, we would do that in subsequent meetings, either collectively or individually?
Correct. I anticipate that would start coming back for review at the November 19th meeting for adoption.
Okay.
It all depends on what our new city manager wants to do.
Are we also going to, during that period of time, revisit the estimates for cannabis tax revenue?
We will be revisiting all revenue estimates.
Now, this is my final question, but it's my favorite question. Ever since I was elected and sworn in, I've been advocating for a program. And the program is this. We have 12,000 approximately business licensees in the city. And I think we are well-known and notorious for having the lowest business license in, I think, Orange County, ridiculously low, such that Nordstrom pays $200. And of course, in that case, the taxpayers subsidize Nordstrom. Of course, you know, some taxpayers subsidize Nordstrom more than others. Anyway, but that's their choice. So I have this idea, is when somebody does, applies for a business license, they have an opportunity to make a voluntary contribution to various things. Like, for example, the police department, if they wanted to voluntarily contribute to some of the items that are referenced in the chief's memo, or the police department in general, the homeless shelter, some of these issues that are dealing with us, I've been bringing this up now for two and a half years, nobody has told me it's a bad idea, but we haven't moved a muscle on it. Nobody has told me it's a bad idea, but we haven't moved a muscle on it. Will you make a commitment to me that that will also be part of the study session, and we'll study that?
Absolutely.
And bring it back on November 15th?
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's my favorite answer.
If I may, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
It should also be noted that the foundation accepts donations for the police department, the fire department, the Parks and Community Services Department. They've recently updated their website, so that online donations are now possible. You can commit to any purpose that you would like, so that is currently available today, just through a slightly different avenue.
Right. Thanks.
Councilor Chavez.
I'm very pleased that one of my questions I had was not been asked yet. So Mayor Potem stole a couple of mine, so did Councilmember Reynolds. But I have one question I could still ask. On page four of the staff report, you know, we mentioned that, you know, we're going to do our best to ensure the taxpayers are not subsidizing businesses in our community. Can we get a ballpark number or percentage of how much we've been subsidizing as taxpayers?
That is a tall order, partly because a city should be subsidizing some programs. For instance, some senior programs, some parks programs related to children's programs.
No, he's talking about business.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're just businesses. You know, I don't have an exact number for the business side of things. That will come out when we do the fee study for public services, for development services. This proposal is just including the planning department. It would be all of development services. I suspect we're subsidizing probably more than 50%.
Okay. I think it's important to know exactly what, how much we're, as citizens, are paying to businesses. I think it's critical that we know our money is going to our future, like our kids and our parks and stuff like that. Thank you.
Councilmember Mora?
Two quick follow-ups. So on that, is the citywide fee study going to include business license fees?
It is not, because they are a tax.
Got it.
And any potential change requires a ballot measure.
Okay. And then you had, if I understand correctly, when you were talking with Councilmember Reynolds, on page eight, when we're looking at the IT position being $8,500, because we don't expect to hire it right away, did we use that same methodology for the remainder of the positions?
Not all of them. If you look in attachment 11, the positions that that method was used for is the network administrator position, the energy services, and this isn't recommended for tonight, but it was included in the initial preliminary budget. We knew that that would take time to recruit, so we were anticipating that being funded for nine months of the year. So you can see that it was initially, the budget is $150,000 for the energy and sustainability services manager, but the ongoing cost impact was $200,000, and it's that, we didn't budget a full year's worth. I don't believe any of the other positions were done that way.
Okay, thank you.
We just those two.
Any other questions?
No, Mike.
Okay, thank you. I still have questions. Did you have one more question, Councilmember Guinness? Okay.
Where we have development services, plan check engineer, permit processing specialist, and they would more than pay for themselves, was that included, was the savings included in our budget?
The revenue generated by those positions was, yes.
And the savings from not paying consultants?
Correct.
Okay. And then Parks and Community Services, pages 101 and 103. 101 at the top, Neighborhood Community Center. We're showing a budget of $460,000 for a building that doesn't exist. But I understand that some of that has to do with expenses that, expense activities that are being conducted in other areas, security patrols of Lyons Park and so forth. However, it's more than double what we had for the budget when the building did exist? So is there a reason for that? That just seems odd to me.
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Mr. Martin will answer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The building is scheduled to open in this coming fiscal year, so we have budgeted for that. We also have budgeted expenses related to the lawn at Lyons Park, which we're clumping under the Neighborhood Community Center.
Okay. And we didn't have the security back when the building was open either. Okay. And then on page 103, so stay put, animal care services, we have MNO for the various contracts, but we also have a couple hundred thousand in salary and benefits to run $436,000 worth of contracts. So do we have a full-time person monitoring animal control now? Because we still have animal control officers in the PD. So what is that person doing? Because it looks like somebody full-time is fairly well-remunerated.
So there is a full-time position that is allocated to animal care services, as well as one part-time position to oversee both contracts, to work with the Animal Services Committee, to plan animal-related community events, to help with donation drives and things like that. That person also works with other divisions in the department, such as our Class B drivers, and assists with some of our youth programs as well.
So it's other activities other than exclusively animal care, then?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I just couldn't figure out how it could cost $200,000 to administer a $436,000 contract. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Telford, so I wanted to just make sure that there's clarity. Within our police department, we are budgeted for 136 police officers. Is that correct? And how many are we staffed for? How many officers do we have right now?
Give me one moment, please.
I'm looking at the vacancy report that was updated May 25th. There were four police officer positions, sworn positions. I'm not sure, perhaps--
Ms. Letourneau, do you know the number?
I just don't know how many of the others are sworn.
Is it 126? 128, okay. So we have 128. We're budgeted for 136, okay? And then in the dispatch, which is, although they work with the police department, they're actually under a different bargaining group, how many positions are we budgeted for in My recollection is that it's 23. Give me just one moment.
I'm not sure if the communications installer is in that group.
So it's either 22 or 23. Okay. And then, do we know how many positions we have currently filled?
It looks like 14.
14?
Mm-hmm. There's eight vacancies for communication officer and one vacancy for communications supervisor.
Okay. And then, so we didn't, we kept all those full funding for that department?
Correct.
Okay. And did we do anything this year? I know that's a very, very difficult, stressful job, very hard for us to fill those positions because of the high level of intense, you know, work that they have to do. It takes special people to actually do that job. Is there anything that we did this year to try to help to recruit and help with the recruitment effort?
We did. So we have existing senior communication officer positions. So all those employees that qualified under that got promoted and reclassified. We also took those positions, or those individuals who were at a lower step, and moved them to top step where we could, for every single person that was in there for retention. And we look at every single opportunity in terms of bringing people back that were here before and offering opportunities for, to come back at the seniority levels. Anything that was possible, we've put on the table.
Okay. And then, and that was this, like, within the last couple of months?
Last six months.
Yeah.
Or sooner, yes.
And then, is there anything else that we can do in order to try to fill those positions?
We are continuing right now. We're working on other ideas that we hope to bring to you soon, that will require side letters with the union and things like that, but we're looking at some creative approaches to enhance the recruitment efforts.
Okay. And I don't know if you answered this question when you were talking with Councilmember Guinness, and so I'm just going to ask it, and if it's already been answered, I apologize. Maybe you can just answer it again. But can you explain the vehicle replacement fund and the changes that we've made going forward with how that fund is used?
The vehicle replacement fund is actually an equipment replacement fund. It has more in it than just vehicles. It is utilized as a mechanism to provide resources for the replacement of existing equipment and vehicles in the fleet. It also operates the mechanics, the fleet unit that services all of the vehicles in the fleet. In the past, at least from what I can tell, I'm still trying to get to the bottom of it, but from what I can tell, it is an internal service fund. We do internal service billings to each of the departments. In the budget book, it's down in the maintenance and operations section under internal rent. That, a portion of that represents billings from this fund. From what I can tell, in previous years, we would budget to fully recoup the costs of the internal service fund, the operating costs, which would essentially replenish the equipment replacement fund each year. What it looks like may have happened is that there was an issue with our system, asset works, that's used for all of the work, the maintenance work that's done on the vehicles. It wasn't properly accounting for the labor hours associated with maintenance. And because that wasn't being captured, the full amount that had been anticipated to be billed to the departments wasn't done. So let me try and explain this a little bit easier. If we were anticipating $800,000 in operating costs for the maintenance of vehicles, that would include salaries, benefits, parts, tools, everything that goes into essentially running a mechanic shop, we would anticipate that that would be fully billed out to the departments, so that it wouldn't deplete cash in that fund. What it looks like has been happening, as an example, we budgeted $800,000, and we only billed out maybe $400,000. So it appears to have unintentionally eroded the cash in that fund.
Is that fund comprised of both equity and cash?
It is. So that fund is a little bit different than the governmental funds, which is your general fund, gas tax fund, all of your special funds. We have three internal service funds, the self-insurance fund, the equipment replacement, and the IT replacement fund. Those don't operate like a traditional governmental fund. They operate just like a business. So if you own a business and, you know, you have, you own the building that you operate out of, that is an asset. It holds value. The value of that asset is a part of equity. It's a part of your fund balance.
The value of a car, for example.
In this case, the value of the car is shown in the fund balance schedule on page 30 of the budget book. It shows the anticipated beginning fund balance of 7.5 million. But that doesn't mean that we have 7.5 million in cash. If we were to sell off the entire fleet, in theory, we would have 7.5 million in cash, but we're not likely to do that. So it's a little bit, it's a little bit different than the other funds. Because of this billing issue, it has reduced the cash in that fund. I think one of the other things, from what I can tell, that has reduced the cash in the equipment replacement fund, is the purchase of additional vehicles to the fleet. These are not the replacement, but brand-new, you know, brand-new units, brand-new pool vehicles. You know, say we had a fleet of 70 vehicles and we want to make it 75. Those five vehicles would have been purchased out of this fund, but they were essentially using money that was otherwise intended for the replacement of the other 70. That has also artificially depleted the cash. We're still doing an analysis. We, because of limited resources and finance, not to mention the archaic accounting system, much of this analysis has to be done by hand. We're working on it. We've made a lot of progress. We just don't have final answers just yet.
But in this budget moving forward, we're not going to have that mistake happen anymore?
Actually, we've corrected it for 1819 as well.
Okay, good.
As soon as we identified the issue, we've, we made steps to fix it.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to open this item up now for public comment. If you would like to speak to this item, if you could please line up at the podium. I'm sorry, I'm getting requests for a break, so we will take a five-minute break. We will now move to public comment. If you would like to speak to this item, please come to one of the two podiums. We also have the seats in the first row of each row, the first seat in each row reserved. I know, I can't say that. For anyone who needs to sit down while they're waiting. So at this time, we'll start with you, Mr. Humphreys. And you know what? I want to remind everyone, thank you. We also, if you need any hearing devices, we have these new fancy hearing devices so that you can follow along and not have to strain.
Good evening. Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. Welcome to your remodeled playroom, and hopefully it'll, it'll become fun and productive all through the future. As per these, by the way, you should be aware that you've got some new stuff up here, and while a number of people have been talking, other people have had their mics on, and I can hear them breathing just as clear as day. So you may want to think about that, as everybody--
Well, I'll admit that that is probably me, because I'm the only one that has the mic on unless there's someone speaking. So I apologize.
All right. Well, it could have been, there's a whole bunch of people down here who talk all the time, so it's good, as they should be. Anyway, back to my point. I appreciate the time. And quite honestly, I do have one area of concern. Mayor, pardon me, Member Guinness specifically brought up an area in Fairview Park and that issue of the Quimby Act. You know, the reality is, is that we, as a city, actually imposed a park fee on apartments back a number of years ago. And the whole purpose of that was to try and bring us up in acreage to our stated goal of 4.26 acres per thousand residents. We're about three right now. So we keep falling down as our population grows and apartments come in and we get more population. And the problem with that is, is that when we set up with the Quimby Act purpose, as Member Guinness said specifically, that act is for acquiring and maintenance of a park, not for doing other tasks. It may be in the park, maybe something not caused by the park. There's some hydrological data that pretty well substantiates that the water that is required for that drain is actually coming from outside the park into the park. It's actually coming down off of canyon area. And if that's true, then the park fee should never fund that park, should never fund that. That should be funded by the city's general fund, because it is a function of getting the water from out of the park and leaving it out of the park, leaving it out of the housing and what have you in those areas as a storm runoff. So you need to keep in mind very specifically on that issue. Secondarily, and probably more importantly, is you're going to have to address Measure A when this comes up to be started, no matter what anybody keeps on thinking they're saying. They need to look at it. The last, but not too far away, keep in mind always that the primary job of you guys and this city is to provide the safety and the health of the community. of you guys and the city is to provide the safety and the health of the community. Please keep that in mind all your decisions. Thank you very much.
Jeopardy. Hi, Bill McCarty. I forgot to mention that last time. So I was a little disappointed to see that the full-time energy manager was taken off of the budget for that, but encouraged that it's going to be looked at again in Q1. I previously used to develop building automation systems at a time when the industry was transitioning from systems that just turned equipment on and off to really monitoring and measuring energy usage and trying to get, become more efficient. And companies like HP did that because they, they saved huge amounts of money. So there's a real incentive to do it, and not just, I mean, conservation is one reason, but if that's not enough to really drive it, the savings are really tremendous as well. So I would encourage that. And then also, as a city licensee, business licensee, I would be down, I think the young people say that right, with, with Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem Stevens' idea of adding the additional donation amount for the license fee or something, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Brett Echols. I'm a resident of Costa Mesa, and it's budget time, probably the most important and probably at some times the least fun thing to do, but I appreciate your time and efforts. And I'm going to be one who's a handout, so I do apologize, but it's something I care deeply about. Back, as some of you know, the city owns roughly four fields, active use fields in, in the city, while about 95% of the active use fields are on Newport-Mason Unified School District campuses. So as, I'm not going to repeat the use of lights and all that, I think most of you have spoken to, and you guys understand that. But a project was approved in concept by the Newport-Mason Unified School District and councils previous to you to do a feasibility study at both Kaiser Elementary and Davis Magnet School, now Franny Field. And in 1516, it was actually a rough budget in the CIP of about $7 million. The feasibility was conducted and went out where Kaiser was going to be about 8.6 and Davis was going to be about 4.5. So those were put in the CIP budget, and this last year, actually, Jack Hammett, some of the turf upgrades that we were looking at for Fields 1 and 2 were taken out, about 1.8 million. That money, the discussion was to apply some of that for budgetary purposes for these two projects. This year, of course, budget tightening and all that, but now these projects are actually taken out of the CIP altogether. And my issue is the staff here, and the school district staff for the past year and a half have been hammering out a joint use agreement. It was funded through the council a year ago to, to proceed with that. When I say we're that close, we are that close to hammering out an agreement. Now, that doesn't mean shovels are going in the dirt and all that. There's, there's more work to be done. So I'm here tonight, understanding that you're not going to put back in, you know, $8 million in this year's budget, but I would ask that you put these two projects back into a 2021 CIP budget so that it's there, and then allow your staff to finish out the deal, the agreement, and then when money's become available, then, then it's there in a CIP budget. And the other thing I can save money from that, the Kaiser feasibility study was 8.6, well, about 3 million, 1.5 million a field of turfing, so 3 million, take that out of there right now. We agreed a long time ago to take out turf at Kaiser and just light it. That was critical for the school and other, other things. So I ask you to put that back into the CIP budget for future use. Thank you very much.
Speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Toboda. I'm Chair of the Finance and Pension Committee, and I'm, I'm speaking for the committee, and thanks for the, a few minutes of extra time. First, I want to thank council, staff, and the finance department. I know they, all of them worked extremely hard on this budget. I made the comment at the last Five Pack meeting that I have more confidence in this budget than I have in previous budgets. I know the numbers have been scrubbed, as the finance director mentioned. They've gone back and looked at some, the accounting, putting accounts in the correct bucket, above the line, below the line, as Kelly mentioned, also taking a look at the equipment fund or the, or the IT fund, looking at those, make sure they're properly administered and billing out at, at the proper rates. We issued our final letter last week on all, yes, there was a hiccup, and you may not have received it until today. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try and answer those questions. We had three meetings ourselves in the Five Pack on the budget, and I know, like I said, staff and council devoted a lot of time to the budget. I compliment you both. The 3.1 million gap has been reduced to 437K. A major point in both our draft and final letters was not to use reserves, and we offered a scenario just to do that. Our recommendation remains, even though the use of reserves has been substantially reduced, one of the reasons for our recommendation is that, from the beginning, Five Pack did not feel city policy supported the use of reserves for the proposed purposes. I might, I might add that the vote not to use reserves was unanimous by the committee. The letter that, our final letter refers to a vote of 6 to 2. Those two votes were related to concerns on specific recommendations on capital projects separate from the use of reserves. I don't want to minimize the decision council has to make in any way, but voting for, for voting on 370, 337K is a lot less impactful than voting on 3.1 million. Another way of looking at the 437 is that it's 3/10ths of 1% of the operating budget. Staffing. Appreciate the additional analysis provided for each of the positions. It's something both Five Pack and council requested. Note that, I note that staff added one full-time position. I guess that was more, Clerical Eric got left off the budget. I'm glad the money is in there, though that's the important thing in the original budget. The staff report recommends deferring approval on five positions. Our letter outlines our position on staffing, so I ask you refer to the letter. We advise that council to focus on positions that pay for themselves and positions deemed critical to the functioning of the city. For all the positions, we feel it is important that council make any approvals contingent on the concurrence by the new city manager. For expediency, we reduce some of the items on our attachment A, and we'll follow up in a few weeks, but one of my, one item I do want to mention as a concern is legal expenses. As the finance director mentioned, there's 1.5 million in this budget in addition to the city attorney's office for legal fees or litigation fees. We have a concern that that, those might exceed 1.5. Those are, those are outside forces, if you will, impacting that budget. The city does not necessarily have control over the, the fees that, that the city will incur, depending on who, or who sues the city, I guess. One other item I think is very important, two items that we brought up, and it was mentioned today a couple times, of the specialized mechanic and the police shooting range. We suggested for, for both of these, some type of sharing agreement with adjacent cities. For the mechanic, I think I mentioned it in the May study session, and I read staff report of tonight's handouts about the mechanic. Certainly, this would not be as convenient as a city having its own person or facility. I get that. This is understandable. But let me read from page 2 in the budget book. This is under the, the city manager's budget message. "The city is expected to see annual operating deficits in the future, which will require the city to face, will require the city to face increasingly hard choices in the next budget cycle, including reevaluating how we work, how we deliver services, and what matters most to the community." "We," in this case, is the city staff, "reevaluating how we work." So that's one thing we're, this is alluding to, is it time to reevaluate how the city works? Does it make sense to have a separate mechanic that may be available in an adjoining city? Huntington Beach, Newport Beach, whatever, or same thing with the shooting range. Does it make sense to spend 377K to modernize a facility if there's one next door in adjoining city? Thank you.
If you could please come to the podium so that you could be ready to speak, because the timer just goes right away.
Me?
That's you. Yes, sir.
My name's Phil Chipman. I've been a resident here in Costa Mesa for 39 years, so, long time. Reason I'm up here, I don't come often to these meetings, and I just read in the Daily Pilot that the budget was going to be passed. That was a few days ago. So I said, oh, I wonder if there's money in it for something that I'd like to see done. So I reached out to Councilmembers Maher and Reynolds, asking if there's a, ideas about a sustainable city committee, if that makes sense, and replied back that, yes, there's an energy manager was being thought of, and I would like to add the title Sustainability to that title. This is a broad issue, a huge issue, and for every city across the nation should be addressing this issue. I don't know how many people believe in climate change, but just the UN, the United Nations just put out a report that we have to do something within 12 years to cut back on CO2. This is extremely critical. Along with that comes our oceans. I don't know if you've gone in the oceans, but lately, I like to surf, but the oceans have become warmer, way too far into the year. So the, the oceans are warming up. Also, I clean up on the beaches all the time. Single-use plastics, I would like to see them eliminated. That comes, it comes under the title of sustainability for a city. So, so actually, an energy manager plus sustainability manager could be included, and they're tightly coupled, sustainability and energy management. It also has benefits for the community. Here's another example. I have a broad list of subjects that we, could be covered throughout the city. They are so broad, they affect every organization that is within the city. Building codes, street maintenance, park maintenance. I'll give you an example. The streets were just paved here with black asphalt. They're all heat islands. There's a thing called green streets. I don't know if you've heard of them, but they're light-colored. The cooling costs of our residents could be reduced, that saves money. They're also pervious. They allow the groundwater to seep through, replenish aquifers. Also, it provides drainage so that cleaner water flows to the ocean. Three minutes. Okay.
20 seconds.
I, oh, oh, okay. I have many more other issues. Electric, well, I mentioned the 20 mile-per-hour speed limit. There's a recent study that came out that said that every year that a child grows up, their lung capacity is reduced by 1% because of the, the pollution coming out of cars. Reduce the pollution, 20 mile-per-hour, help the health of our city also. So you can see there are many, many advantages to this type of position.
Thank you for coming out.
My concern with the budget is to have the police department be the only department that's having items deferred. I think that sends a bad message. I think it sends a bad message to the department and to those that work in the department. I was really glad to see that you got the reserves down to 437,000, but I'd like to suggest that if you took the 250,000 for the three aides and the chief of staff, and if you canceled the 150,000 for the design concept for the Polerino, you'd be under 400,000. And if the event at the fairgrounds didn't come to pass, you'd be like 416,000 with maybe a 21,000 in reserves. And the three interns that you mentioned earlier, I'm assuming are free, and I think that's an excellent idea, and I wish we would have done it a lot earlier, and I think that these paid staff members could certainly be facilitated with more interns. And whether they're interns at a doctoral level or a master's degree or a public policy program, I think that we could save easily 250,000 on today's budget. That's, you can see what's going on. I think we have a lot of questions going on about this budget right now, and my, one of my concerns regarding the police department is that they desperately need, in the IT department, is an evidence security system. And this is evidence that is tracked and that is secure and is ready for court without any questioning. So I think to put that on hold until November or even beyond that is really a detriment to the police department, the court system, and to the safety of our entire city. So I'm asking you, please, to reconsider what's going on with the police department, not to defer what they're asking for, and to do your magic. You worked it from 1 point to 3 point some million to 437. And I think the police department, they're doing 113,000 calls a year. That's one call for every man, woman, and child in the city. So I think we need to give them every support that we can. So thank you for reducing those reserves, but I think we can do more, especially in support of the police department. Thank you.
Hi, Derek DeCicco, Parks, Arts, and Community Service Commissioner. We just had a meeting about this a couple months ago to give our recommendation. The one recommendation that we did make in our meeting that we had was two out of the top five items in the update to the Open Space Master Plan of Parks and Recreation. I understand it's still in draft mode, but two of those top five items be addressed. And so I just wanted to go over that briefly tonight, but before I do that, I want to thank all of you council members for how much time you put into this budget. You can tell there's hours upon hours. I really appreciate that, as well as staff here finding ways to save our city money. I appreciate all of you for all that time. So here is the, in case people that don't know, a study that was done about two years ago, it's still in the draft mode. It has not been officially approved. It's been two years, so hopefully we can either officially approve that, or if we feel, this is, I've heard maybe someone say it wasn't an accurate assessment. If we need another one, do it. But I always have an opinion of how to improve the city. All of you have an opinion. Everyone sitting here has an opinion, but sometimes it's best when a third party can look at it holistically and see what's needed in a city, and that's what this is. So this is what we have now, so this is what we're going by. So they kind of prioritize what are the top needs. The walking, jogging, running, hiking trails, tools totaled 10, that was the highest need. That's obviously a harder need to create these spaces. That's not an easy thing to do, but that was the highest one. Second one was soccer fields, both youth and adult, that had seven tools. Lights on existing fields had six, open space, passive recreation space, six, and then multi-use fields with lights for all those different sports, as well as a possible additional swimming pool. Those came in as tied for fifth. So in our meeting, we said two out of those top five, we would like to see addressed in the budget. Unfortunately, I didn't, we didn't see any of those in this current budget. We also did not see those being significantly addressed in increasing use and then planned for the next five years. I understand it doesn't mean it won't be done, but it, there are no current plans for that, and that was concerning. They had a diagram of a pool. We already have one. Is that really a high priority item? Maybe, maybe not. Here was what was mentioned earlier, the Kaiser, the Davis, and the Parsons projects, and there's already diagrams and pictures for what could be done for those fields. Those are in there, and that would address three of those top five items if those projects were done, as well as the last item I wanted to show. Could I request any more time? 20 seconds?
I'm sorry. Could you just wrap it up, please?
Yep, I'll wrap it up. The other project that was funded and brought up earlier, that Jack Hammett fields 2 million, that also was not seen, so I'm concerned that a lot of these projects for Park and Rec are getting pushed to the side.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Wendy Leese. I do, do serve on the Five Pack, and first of all, I want to thank the finance staff and Kelly in particular, just for her jumping in to this whole process and, and making so many suggestions and improvements, changes, and as Mr. Toboda just said, doing, working differently and using our money more efficiently, sustainability, and not having to delve into, go into the reserves. So I commend you for getting us down to 437,000, but... reserves. So, I commend you for getting us down to 437,000. But in looking at the memo, which is Attachment 5, and also, I want to commend Tammy for all her hard work. The survey that was done to, on the subsidizing of the planning-related costs, we subsidized that to $1 million. And so, I'm glad that those fees are being looked at and raised. But I'd really like you, and it doesn't really go into effect until, I think, September, and I know Arlis brought this up too. It does seem that the cost recovery recommended might be somewhat arbitrary, that it goes from 17% to 110%. So, I would just encourage you to really go over this list, and, you know, maybe we can get some more if we raise the percentage of the cost recovery to get 100%. I think, you know, looking at the mobile home conversion, we're only charging them 4.2,000 or 4,000, and we could charge them 13, but we're just going to charge them 7,000. So, there, it's something to, you know, like, it's a work in progress. I don't mind paying an extra $10 for my business license for, that I pay, so I think that's fair. Also, to just make sure that you have all the fees on there. The sober living operators permit, it's just the cost to the city for sober living houses is a lot more than the fee that they pay. Also, the last thing I want to mention is regarding the Fairview Park master plan. I think that's, might be on the last, a question on the last memo. But remember, when you talk about the master plan, remember to include a total restoration plan. The Fairview Park Alliance has written you several letters, and I know that it's kind of in the total restoration plan, but to also have a plan going forward. And thank you for all your hard work. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is John Merrill, Mesa del Mar neighborhood. I want to talk a little bit about the budget that's being proposed tonight. There are a lot of CIP projects that have been canceled or deferred as a result of this deficit that we saw at the last meeting. And I wanted to address a, an issue that hasn't been brought up, or actually was brought up at the last meeting about how, when a project, a capital improvement project is proposed in a prior year, how that money cannot actually be canceled, that project deprogrammed or deobligated, and put back into balancing the current fiscal year budget. We have a perfect example of what actually happened with Fire Station Number One, Placentia Bicycle Signal Project, et cetera. These are projects that were programmed in a prior year. There may have been savings on those projects. The funding's still obligated, but it can be canceled and brought back in. Funding hasn't been used, or it's not going to be used. So, when we start talking, when there was a city council member who had mentioned that the Polerino Channel Trail Project was in a prior year, so it didn't affect our current budget. Well, you know what? Actually, this is proof that it does. And that $150,000 would make a huge dent in taking down the 450, down to at least 300,000. There are some other things that could be done as well. It's a real shame when we have to have these ancillary and optional services that really cause us to get rid of capital, good capital improvement projects and some that are not so good. It's really a shame that that has to happen. So, I also want to address another issue, and that is that it seems like this council is trying to tell us something that's not quite true. And I want to give a great example. The article that was written today by Madam Mayor and Mr. Mayor Pro Tem about the police and the budgeting process said the community, well, there is confusion about the budgeting process. There's confusion. The community is confused. The police chief is confused. The police union's confused. And it started to dawn on me, it really sounds very, very familiar. You know, you're confused. You don't get it. You just don't get it. And it's always coming from one or two people. It really is. And it really dawned on me. It's sort of abusive. It's almost like gaslighting on a community-wide scale. And if people aren't aware of what gaslighting is, let me explain real quick. So, gaslighting is when a person in authority over a victim asserts control over a victim by saying 1 plus 1 equals 3, and keeps saying that over and over and over until you actually start to think, am I crazy? Am I crazy? No, you're not crazy. 1 plus 1 equals 2. That's what I see is going on right now. We've got to stop that. Thank you.
So, I'm confused. Because I look at this, I'm sorry to be so basic, but if you look on page four of this thing, this pie chart, 30, wait, first of all, the police got like a million-dollar raise in this budget, from what I understood, and they've got 34% of the pie, and then you add 20% for fire and rescue, that's 54% of our budget. 54% of our budget. That seems like a hefty amount to me. Maybe I'm just too basic on this, but that's a lot. Plus, I'd like to add that, there's no lights on, I went out to get you this, John, this article about the thing, there's no lights on. There's no lights outside. Okay? So, fire and safety, give me a few more minutes. People can fall down the steps. Could someone go and turn the lights on? Thank you. Okay. So, also, I'd like to say that what you've budgeted this year with the homeless shelter, and you're fighting the sober living things, I believe that that is actually helping the police. I believe that that is going to make their life easier. The policemen that I have spoken to said that having the homeless shelter open is helping them. You know, 1 out of 4 calls for service in our town is opioid-related. And this just came out June 14th. This is the City Journal about West Coast cities. Homelessness is an addiction crisis disguised as a housing crisis, not just in Costa Mesa, but all over the West Coast. And anyone that is having an addiction problem is spending almost $1,900 a week on drugs. So, if they're out there, they're robbing us. They're robbing you people. And I'm sorry, but Mr. McNiff is here tonight, Mary Spadoni's friend, Grant McNiff. You know, he's promoted sober living in our community. He thinks this is wonderful. I'm saying that this is, the best time to make money is when there's blood running in the streets, in this case, drugs. And I think that the sober living community has an obligation to give back to our city financially. I look here on this proposed fees. First of all, I don't see any fees for the marijuana. We're all on the same page, right here? I don't see, it says sober living operators permit. Wendy Leece was just speaking about this. I don't see that they are paying commensurate with what they're costing our city. And then you look at the marijuana business permit, and it's 000. What's that all about? Thank you.
That's renewals. Okay, we will close public comment. If you would like to speak, please come to the two podiums. Otherwise, this will be our last speaker.
I would like to start by just cautioning the previous speaker about issues like slander because it's not the first time she has done that to a member of the public. This is not a balanced budget, what's being presented, though I appreciate it coming down from 3.15 million, that was going to be taken out of the reserves, to 437,000. That's, it's still not a balanced budget, and all the documents is being hailed as a balanced budget. A balanced budget is when revenue and expenditures are in balance, and if we're taking money out of reserves, that's by definition not a balanced budget. So, things like the shelter is not going to be a one-time expenditure, and though I understand that had to be done in the previous fiscal year, going forward, things that are reoccurring, that's not really what the reserves are for. So, I'd like to just caution about calling things as they are. I don't think the park fees are, is an appropriate use for that storm drain project at Fairview Park, and that's for multiple reasons. And also, I think it can be construed as hypocritical to name as a goal, the number-one goal, to keep our community safe, and then delay dealing with additional police department needs until November. So, one way or another, it has to be dealt with, whether it's today, or in a week, or in eight months. By delaying it, it's like kicking down the can down the road, and in my opinion, it sends the wrong, the wrong message. So, you know, we want, it doesn't matter that, you know, whatever percent of the budget is dedicated to the police. If we need more, we need more. We have more issues. So, we have to face, you know, directly what, what needs to be happening in the funding. And I'm concerned that the timing is also bad. It's mid-November. It's right before the holidays. It's a study session, so that probably means it's not going to be dealt with until December or the beginning of next year. That's a lot of time to pass. And I just don't know what's going to be different then in terms of still having to spend additional money, as opposed to maybe doing it at a time when people are not paying as much attention, and that worries me. I hope that's not the case. And I also have concerns about the process. I would hope that people, all heads of the departments, can address their concerns without having to write the memos in the ways they were written, and that things can be resolved without the fact, the way that it's been happening this last budget. But the fact that it happened, had to happen that way makes me feel like there's a hostile environment in which disagreement or asking for things is not okay, and I hope that we can work on and address that in future budgets and in the coming months. Thank you.
Hi. So, I was looking at the handout, and I noticed that they've got on the slide that says fiscal budget overview. It says, and this was the unavoidable costs, economy is slowing, revenues are projected to increase by 2%, budget for new homeless shelter operations and purchases permanent shelter, budget for litigation costs, and increase in salaries and benefits. So, these were all unavoidable costs. They're known costs, or should have been known costs, and I believe they were also known back when you all decided to increase the staff and hire a chief of staff and four assistants. You should have known that. I'm sorry. That was irresponsible. Now, then I go back, and I'm looking at the number of positions where you're talking about deferring positions. Why, when you were talking about increasing the staffs, weren't you talking about deferring some of those positions? Now, admittedly, I come from the private sector, and do you know what would happen if I started a job and went in and they said to me, hi, we've got five vice presidents, we had five vice presidents, we've hired two more, and if I walked in that job and I said, hey, I'm going to need more help, do you know what I would be told? It's irresponsible. So, then we go back, and we're looking at projects that we now have to eliminate. So, a couple come to mind, West Side Restoration Project, building modification projects. Those would have been nice to have for the residents. You know what? Part of leadership is making tough decisions. Part of leadership is making sacrifices. Good leaders make sacrifice. I'm looking for a good leader up there. Stand up and do the right thing. Stop being selfish with our money.
Beth Raffakis, thanks for letting me speak on this. I had some questions about, I was looking at Chief Sharpneck's memo of May 10th, and there are some items in here that really don't have anything to do with technology, and I was wondering if they had been, were being restored, such as the field ops patrol is 20,000, traffic 20,000, animal control, I think, is 4,000, 15,000 for the helicopter program, 8,000 for youth and crime intervention, and 20,000 for jail. And some of these items don't meet the contract requirements, so I have concern that therefore, it's going to be eliminated, like, for example, the helicopter program, or you're going to reduce the number of hours that are available. And the helicopter program especially is actually kind of a force multiplier, and I know it flies around my house all the time because there's a lot of accidents on Newport Boulevard and 17th Street. So, I have some concern with that. So, to say that you have to review everything that the police department has requested because there are technical issues or involve technology is not necessarily a valid statement, as far as I'm concerned. I'm happy that you had eliminated most of the 3.15 million dollars in reserves. However, you still have over 400,000, and I think that you can do better than that. I think that Mayor Pro Tem Stevens was on the right track when he was talking about the elevator project, deferring that. However, that was probably the wrong project to pick because that is a public safety issue. So, I think that needs to be addressed. But there's other things in your budget that could be deferred as well. I know there's a grand plan for the playground down at Lyons Park. That could be scaled back or deferred. Part of it could be completed. Some of it could be deferred. Also, removing all the trees down there in Lyons Park, perhaps that would also help save money. And so, I think that you can, you need to go back to the drawing board because, as one of the previous speakers said, it's not truly a balanced budget because your revenue has to either match or exceed your expenses, and that's not the case when you have to pull money from reserves. Instead of pulling money from reserves, you should be building the reserves because if you had built up the reserves to a higher level, you wouldn't be hit so hard when you had to come up with the unexpected expense of setting up shelter. Thank you.
This will be our final speaker.
Hi there. Thanks for your service to our community. My name's Lance Herada. I have three daughters, born and raised Costa Mesa, and now I'm raising them, and I love it. I'm happy to be part of a city that leads and leads loudly. I did want to express concern. I volunteer my time as a regional commissioner for American Youth Soccer Organization. We help 700 kids get out here on the fields, and it's so impossible getting these kids off of their screens now, right? So, but right now, our numbers are growing in every sport, every single one. We just need more lit space, right? So, we have Davis, and we have Kaiser. It's a huge opportunity. Right now, that Park Development Program, 40112, that's where we took 1.8 million dollars away. I spoke here and said, take the 1.8 million from synthetic turf at Jack Hammett. Let's go put it on Kaiser, Davis. Let's keep rocking. Newport Mesa School District, right now, they have their arms open. They want a big hug from the city, right? They're ready to put money in. They have a new maintenance leader. They have awesome new leadership. And right now, you know, I want us to be present. Let's give them some money. They're willing to put some in. We can get more fields done right now. School property is the only way we're going to get more field space. We know, right? So, please, consider, just keep that up there. Let's put these items back in the budget as fast as we can. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Counsel, may I have a motion? And if it's not working, just pick the queue. Just put yourself in the queue. Okay, motion. Okay, Councilmember Maher has a question. We'll call on her first.
Okay, so, I apologize for not being up on Davis and Kaiser, but can, of the 600,000, what was the $600,000 slated for, Ms. Stalford specifically, right? Because obviously, there's another 8.6 million, 4.5 million for actual design and construction. So, that was feasibility?
Madam Mayor, if I can answer that question?
Oh, thank you.
So, the 1.2 million dollars, that was the original money that was set aside, and that was for the design of the fields at Kaiser and also at Davis Magnet School. So, at Davis Magnet, it's a different set of improvements. It's artificial turf and lighting, and at Kaiser, it's lighting only.
Okay, so, on the page 222 of the capital improvement program in this year's budget, the Davis School Field and Lighting Design and Construction, that's not actually accurate. It's just construction. That's the 4.5 million?
Yes, the construction cost is the 4.5 million dollars. It might be in the, in the five-year plan.
Yeah, I'm seeing in the five-year plan, page 222. Okay, and then Kaiser Lighting and Turf, that 8.6 is construction, but now it's not including turf anymore, so it's just Kaiser Lighting. So, that should probably be a new number other than 8.6.
So, the 8.6 is supposed to be for Kaiser? So the 8.6 is supposed to be for, for Kaiser and for Davis, and for Davis Magnet School. No, Davis Magnet School has some pretty money, 4.5 million, and Kaiser has 8.6. And 8.6 includes artificial turf also. So if you take that out, it'll be less than that.
Okay. And you said originally 1.2 was set aside for design?
That's right.
And we're deferring 600 and something?
That's right. So which means using the remaining 600, some thousand dollars, you could design only one of the fields.
Got it, okay. But that 600,000 is remaining?
Yes.
It's going into Storm, it's going into Park and then they're moving it to Storm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I'm, but the remaining 600 that was devoted to design?
Yeah, it, it could be used to design one of the fields.
We're not eliminating that part. That's not what's being proposed.
Is that?
1.2 million and they're taking 625.
Right, I don't remember seeing the other 600 in here somewhere.
It, it's just left in there.
So, so it remains under that project title, NMUSD Field Improvements title. So it's, we're determined how to use that.
Ms. Telfer, did you want to explain?
Sure. The current budget for that project, which actually, if you look under the addendum in your packet, it's under tab three on the last page of that. At the very top, it describes the CIP budget that was initially adopted for the NMUSD Field Improvements. It's described as a budget of 1.24 million and includes design for turf and lighting at Parsons Field, feasibility study for lights at Kaiser Elementary, feasibility study for lights at Davis, and the CMHS additional bleachers. Now, the bleachers have been previously addressed in, in a number of meetings ago. What we're proposing is out of the 1.24 million, taking 625,000 from that project and reappropriating it for the Fairview Park Storm drain project. What I would anticipate, and I think what, what Roger was trying to explain, is we would come back to counsel for direction on the remaining 615,000. We would still anticipate using that for the initial, the intended purpose, which is listed here. We would just need direction on how counsel would like to proceed.
Understood, thank you.
And that could happen at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Guinness, to clarify, did you have, before I go to you, Ms. Green, is it working now or is it not working?
No.
Okay.
I'll have to put in the manual motions.
Okay. So Councilmember Guinness, did you have a question or did you want to make a motion? So I apologize because of the equipment. Oh, sorry, I got to.
I actually am prepared to make a motion but not to approve.
So do you want to go ahead and make?
I would like to make a motion that we continue this to next week. There are, I know that we had a long and arduous hearing. However, there are questions that I have that still remain, including some questions that I asked several weeks ago, maybe even more than a month ago regarding certain expenses, particularly regarding special events and committee costs, which typically when we're in tough times, those are one of the first things that we start really reexamining. And we don't even have a handle on how much it is. So my motion is that we continue to next, to the 25th.
Councilmember Stevens, you were next up in the queue. Did you have a question or?
You mean Mayor Protim?
I'm sorry, Mayor Protim. Come on, give me a break.
I know, I was just teasing you. So yeah, no, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we accept the staff recommendation, number one, to approve the resolution adopting the city of Costa Mesa fiscal year 2019-20 operating a capital improvement budget, including the amendments included in the proposed addendum and attachment three.
Is there a second? Okay, second by Reynolds. And Council, Mayor Protim Stevens, did you want to speak to the item? And then Councilmember Reynolds can speak. And then Councilmember Monzor and Guinness are in the queue.
Yes, I mean, I, I'm very satisfied with the work that's been done on the budget. I, we've heard from the public. I've had so many meetings with so many people. I'm ready to vote on it. I think we've scrubbed the numbers as best we can. And we've got down to the 437, which is, I appreciate and read very carefully, and I appreciate the participation of FIPAC. And I know you don't want to take even one penny out of reserves, but I think it's reasonable under the circumstances. So that's the basis of the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds?
Would the maker include the, actually approving now the mechanic position rather than deferring, which would reduce the use of reserves by, I think it was 132,000?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, next in the queue, or did you want to speak?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I just want to comment. You know, it's, I, I believe this is a very unique budget process. It's, it's my first budget process, so I don't really know how to compare it to previous budget processes from a council member position. But kind of what I understand from many, many, many discussions, and I really appreciate all of the work that everyone's putting into this, from our, our staff, all of the departments, the public, I've spent a lot of time digging through the numbers. But I, I think that this year, the, the best approach is this iterative approach that that staff is proposing here now, where we take one step to get things moving for the year. And then, you know, we're, we're talking about addressing additional issues in November. There may be opportunities to address additional issues between now and November. I just want to share, I've sort of made a list of reasons I think it makes sense to defer a number of the ongoing discussions. Staff has described that we need more information and analysis on a number of items. We've got a new city manager coming in who is very well-recognized and, and respected for her expertise in municipal finance. We'll, in November, we'll have the results of this fee study, which gives us some additional revenue to work with. We're going to have this IT strategic plan. We're optimistic that we're going to get some money from the state budget, which hopefully we know this week, but we'll certainly know by November. We'll have the first quarter results of, of revenue in to have an opportunity to true up. So I just think there's a lot of good reasons to, to wait and, and continue to work through a lot of the questions we have now. But I, I feel comfortable moving forward. I, I wanted to include the mechanic position because that's something that I've heard for, for several years, is really a critical issue. And fleet services, I don't think is something that's going to go away. It sounds like the expectation is that we do need that position. And especially if we're not going to be able to replace vehicles at the rate we might want to replace vehicles, it makes sense to have a mechanic, an additional mechanic on hand.
Councilmember Monzor, did you want to speak to the item?
Yes, so we've known for a long time that we are facing economic slowdown, that our 3% growth was going to go to 2% to 1%. Who knows, maybe 0% and maybe negative down the road. So we've known this for a while. And, but our, the decisions of the majority haven't reflected that reality. And I think it's sad that we're dipping into the CAN ordinance. And that's essentially a contract with the public for infrastructure repair. And a couple examples have been brought up tonight. 230,000 for chief of staff and three aides, the Pollo Reno Channel. Right there alone, that's about 400,000. That could go to public safety, police department. It's going to be obviously very difficult to fund everything the police department is asking for. But we should at least make an attempt when we can find, you know, almost a half million dollars. Or it could go towards our reserves, or sidewalks, or parks, or sports fields, as we've heard tonight. But lastly, I'm disappointed that we're not continuing this for at least one more meeting to get more public input, to get Councilmember Guinness's questions answered. In the past, that was always something we did out of respect for other council members to make sure, whether you agree with them or not, make sure their, all of their questions are answered. And if she still has questions, we have no business voting on this tonight. And I know there's members of the public who still want to dig a little deeper and ask some more questions. And out of respect for them, we should be continuing this, which we could easily do and vote on it in just a few, a few days from now. Thank you.
Councilmember Guinness?
I will not be supporting the substitute motion. Right now, our economy is still sort of okay, but it is slowing down. And since it is at least not in a recession, this is the time we should be looking at rebuilding our reserves. It's the time we should be investing in our capital, our city capital, because we still have things that are recovering, just barely recovered from the deferred maintenance that happened during the recession. Some of the repairs that were made right as the recession ended are already starting to fall apart. I see weeds growing in some of our streets in the neighborhoods. And I'm not talking about along the streets, I'm talking about in the cracks in the middle of the streets. We still have kids on the west side who are walking to school in, in dirt. And when it rains, they walk to school in either dirt mud puddles or in the street. And there are things that I really think we, we could be looking at potentially cutting, but we don't even have the data to know. One of the things I asked for probably shortly after our study session about our costs for special events, I'm not suggesting that we should cut the fourth, the third of July event because that's pending. But we really need to be looking at what we spend on special events, what we spend on luncheons, what we spend on meals, what we spend on travel. By the time we get to November, we're going to have half of that gone. We could probably find another 100,000 to 200,000 in those things. The council staff, maybe it is helpful to have some of them, but I believe we could probably cut that by at least a half, maybe two-thirds or all. Pollo Reno Channel, I believe it's also inappropriate to be spending park fees on the drain in Fairview Park. And as a point of clarification, in 2015, the city actually, I'm, I'm having trouble with this concept that Fairview Park is dumping water towards the homes because in, in 2015, the city actually issued a drainage easement to one of the new tracks coming in adjacent to the park to drain across the park and down through the park. So that's clearly at least one example where the people who, the council majority at that time voted to allow drainage to come from elsewhere into the park. And now we're being told that that very location is receiving drainage from the park. So there's, there's some problem here. And so there, there are a lot of problems here. And I think there, there are things that we could cut. We have recreation programs. We have some good hard metrics for some of the recreation programs where we have a lot of participation, some of them not so much. And I have to wonder, well, so what, what is our participation? Are we spending 20 per participant or are we spending 1,000 per participant? Because I know about 15 years ago, I sat in one of those seats, well, not one of those seats, because these are bright, shiny new seats, and saw the council go through and discover that there were programs where basically, based on the participation, you could have bought the person a ticket to Disneyland in cab fare for what we were paying per participant for some of these local recreation programs. So I, I don't believe we have all the data, but to the extent that we did, I think we really need to be chopping now. What I see here is a little bit of a Scarlett O'Hara approach, fiddle-dee-dee, we'll think about it tomorrow. That's not good. This is the city budget. Every day we wait, more taxpayer dollars are gone. And we shouldn't be going into our reserves when we, when it's not a recessionary period. We have no unique circumstances other than that. We aren't able to bite the bullet and cut where we need to. And that's really unfortunate. Thank you.
Chair Marr.
Would the maker of the motion consider adding the energy manager position into this year's budget?
Mayor Protim Stevens?
So if, what would be the net of these two suggestions?
Ms. Telfer?
It would result in the use of reserves by my calculation of 447,000. It would reduce the use of reserves by 132,000. And then add, add back to the use of reserves by 150, almost a net impact.
So it's a net, it's a wash.
So it's about the same thing? So it's 18,000 more?
Yeah.
And we pick up the two positions, okay? I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Anything, anything further?
What about the second?
Councilmember Marr, anything further?
Second, except.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Marr, anything further?
Yeah.
Okay, you have to push back your, because they, I gave the floor to them, okay?
I wasn't, I wasn't done.
Well, you asked him a question, so he can't turn his mic on until he, anyway.
Okay. Would the maker of the motion also add an additional 600,000 into the CIP for fiscal year 2020 through 2021 to replace the design fee removed from the Davis and Kaiser field study?
So just add that, add that to the next year's budget? So it wouldn't affect this year's budget at all or reserves or anything like that and we can revisit it next year? Could we do that or that, is that not possible?
I, I believe this would be okay with the city attorney. It would be a direct staff to incorporate that into the five-year CIP plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, and that would be fine.
Yeah, I'd be willing to do that, sure.
Okay, and, but just for clarity, we don't have an agreement yet, so there's nothing going to happen this year, probably. We don't have, and I don't know where the agreement is, you don't need to come up now. But we should probably get informed since the public knows more about it than we do.
But I think, I think the gist of what the council member is saying.
I get it.
Responsive to what Mr. Ackles said, which is keep the project on the books. And I'm okay with that.
Councilmember Marr, did you have something else?
I did, thank you. So, so just in general, I mean, we're talking about this year's budget, but I think we would be remiss to talk about that in a vacuum. And the reality is that, as we saw with the development fees in particular, costs have continued to go up, but the, the city has continued to subsidize things, whether it's development fees, whether it's building fees. I'm really interested to see what the result of the citywide feed study is. In the private sector, anyone who runs a P and L recognizes that employee costs go up year over year, usually material costs go up year over year, electricity costs, I can tell you, because this is what I do, go up 2% to 3% every single year. And we, as a city, have not looked at ways in which we need to increase our revenues year after year. So I'm really excited to see development fees tied to CPI. I think we need to look at everything else in the city and see what we need to just tie to CPI such that it goes up with the rest of our expenses. But I would also, I would also, and I don't know if I need to vote for this, but I would also like to look at TOT again. I'd like to look at increasing business license fees. And if we really have 13 million worth of sports fields improvements just in two projects, not to mention a ton of the other things that are on our future plan, on the five-year plan, page 223, then in my mind, you know, we're never going to have 13 million sitting around that we decide sports fields are probably the most important place to put it, to be totally honest, right? It's been interesting listening to public comment and a couple of my colleagues up here because we're talking out of both sides of our mouth. We're saying, don't use any of your reserves, but why aren't you spending more money on kids not walking through mud to school, right? Like, which is it? Is it both? Don't spend reserves and also cut to the bone to make sure that those priorities are funded. And I, and I think what you've seen over the last couple of weeks is there, it's not, nobody universally agrees what the most important thing should be, right? Certainly public safety, but then you get into quality of life issues. And to what extent do we cut services down to the bone such that we're not able to provide the services that we provide? Every single one of us sits up here every single meeting and talks about the events we've gone to, the art walk, the other things. The art walk didn't happen, it cost us any money. But we take a lot of pride and joy in the fact that our city does these things. One of the things that we got cut out, for example, was sidewalk improvements. That was something that came up over and over and over again when I was walking on the east side before the election, was that people wanted a contiguous sidewalk such that they could walk their kids to school on the sidewalk without having to stop in the street. So is that, is that thing more important than something else that we've left in the budget? Sure, we could argue about that all day long. And I think what we've got here is the best of both worlds. I think unfortunately, we've had to dip into reserves, but that is, as I mentioned in the last council meeting, because we- the last council meeting, because we care about resolving homelessness and we care about fighting, so we're living home operators who are operating incorrectly in the city. And because we care about so many of the things that were so important to citizens as I talked to so many of them during the election. And so we are continuing to follow those priorities. And in order to do that and do that well, this year, we're dipping into reserves. And I can totally live with that. But I think we have to balance that with also looking at increasing revenues. And as I mentioned, that includes TOT, that includes business license fees, and that includes frankly, if we're going to talk about a huge amount of sports field improvement, maybe that's a sports fields bond. I don't, I don't know. But I want to be very clear and say on the record that I'm opening the door to all of those things. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I ask for a clarification? Yes. Councilmember Reynolds, did you, second, you agree to that? Okay, thank you.
Couple of points. I guess first, I'm kind of curious where there's mud in Westside Costa Mesa. I can only think of places where they don't have sidewalks in front of the homes, but I don't think we have dirt roads anywhere in Costa Mesa that kids are walking to a school in, in Westside. In terms of the budget itself, I think this is a fair proposition. You know, I always look back at, my parents told me about compromise, right? It's like you get something you want, you don't get everything you want. And that's when it's fair, right? When you know you can get more, but everyone got something that they can latch on to and say, hey, we've got a small victory here, we've got a victory here. I'm very pleased that we are, we were diligent and we did lower the, I'm very proud that we're diligent and as a council, we did lower the amount of general fund reserves we're going to use. I do find this, while unfortunate, I wish it was zero. I do not believe I can find anything else I can cut that wasn't critical. And I combed this budget on the weekend. I saw a few officers here and their police explorers on Saturday. I tired with them a little bit, and I was here pretty late that day, too. I feel confident with this budget because we are using our natural resources to our advantage. We're getting a new city manager in two weeks. A city manager, which we chose because of their expertise in financing. I think it'd be very foolish to not incorporate her in part of the discussion, especially since this is about the budget. I think it's smart to wait a couple, a quarter to really assess what, what is a critical need in terms of jobs and equipment for our facility. I don't forget IT struggles here because the first person I met when I walked into City Hall is a council member. And I know that a backbone of our department, backbone of our, of our city, they keep everything running. And I think it's smart to tie that into the bigger requests from the police. Because a lot of those things overlap. And let's not make things more complicated than it should be. Let's do a proper study and make sure everything's as accurate as it can be. So when we do decide what to do, we get the clear and concise vision. I think this is fair. Not everyone got what they wanted, and that's okay, because we all got something we wanted. And I view my role here in a very particular way because I'm balancing different interests all the time, in City Hall, outside of City Hall, residents, constituents. I can feel confident in talking to anybody and saying, there's one thing here they would like. So for that reason, I'll support the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Mansour.
Ms. Telford, just want to make sure I understand what Councilmember Mar asked for. Was that the energy services manager or the mechanic or both?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Councilmember Reynolds asked for the mechanic, Councilmember Mar asked for the energy services and sustainability manager, and Councilmember Mar also asked to incorporate the NMUSD dollars into the five-year CIP plan.
Okay.
I believe.
Thank you for the clarification. I misunderstood. So both the energy services manager and the mechanic are being added. What are the two, the energy services manager is 150K approximately? And then how much was the mechanic?
The mechanic was actually, by deferring it, it was a cost.
Oh, I see.
It increased the use of reserves because the cost to outsource is higher than is.
Got it. So you're arguing, or you were saying, if I understand you correctly, the savings on that basically makes the energy services manager a wash?
Almost correct.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, if you want to look at it that way. In reality, I see it as a spending 150,000 for an energy services manager. Have we done any analysis? And I'm all for saving energy. I think that's a great idea. The concern I have is I question whether we're going to get 150,000 in savings each year. And for the lifetime of this employee and for pensions and all those costs, have, do we have any analysis as far as what we really expect? I mean, if a energy services manager says, well, you could redo all the windows and put some insulation, whatever, or make this machinery run more efficiently, and you're going to save 5, 10, 20,000 or whatever, but it's going to cost you 100,000 in upgrades to save a few thousand a year, and we're paying someone 150,000 on top of that, what are, we're not really saving any money that way. We may be saving energy, but we're spending more money. So do we have any analysis that shows this is going to really save us money at the end of the day, that one position?
Analysis that shows absolutes? No, we do not. I believe the Public Services Department and City Managers Office have reviewed the responsibilities of this position. Perhaps Braja can speak a little bit to that. And it would be anticipated that it would also absorb some of the current responsibilities in addition to new responsibilities. That, I don't believe that item was included in your red folders, the job description, only because it was proposed to be deferred.
Okay. Well, unless I see something, you know, in black and white, it's hard to say, you know, really what we're going to be saving if, at the end of the day, I think it'd be wiser to, if we're going to go this route, to hire a consultant for, to do an analysis of what we could be saving and then be done with it and implement the recommendations. So I have some concerns with that. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Guinness.
I have a few things, but to follow on with Councilmember Mansour's comments, there are firms that will do energy audits with suggestions. I don't know how the quality of the service compares with having an in-house person, but they usually provide their service in return for a cut of the savings. So they should be pretty motivated. However, I also just feel that, let's see, perhaps I wasn't clear. I would hate to think that there was any intentional mischaracterization of my remarks, so I will clarify. One of the things that I said about the West Side was that there are children who have a choice of walking in the dirt or walking in the street, not that they were walking in a dirt street. Also, as far as priorities, obviously, our priorities differ. That doesn't mean that anybody's priorities are necessarily bad or hypocritical, but simply because they do not, are not the same as yours, that doesn't mean that there's something lacking in them. My priorities are public safety and public facilities in terms of necessary public services such as keeping our streets running, having our street signals running, fixing the potholes. My priorities are not bread and circuses. But if they're, those are yours, fine. Far be it from me. But I'm not going to say you're hypocritical to have them. I do believe there are certain things that we have yet to examine even because we don't even have the numbers. And it just doesn't seem quite right when the questions were asked many weeks ago that we don't have the numbers. However, that being the case, I do believe that this budget will ultimately get us in trouble in terms of what we have established for our priorities and the spending that we're already going into reserves. And I also believe it'll get us in trouble in the proposed use of the park fees for the storm drain. As you know, we've already received a letter from attorneys from FPPA regarding the Harbor Soaring Society situation. And I would expect the Fairview Park storm drain will elicit probably stronger reaction. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds.
Yeah, sorry, just wanted to add some commentary. So one of the things I mentioned in a reason I supported deferring a lot of the items in this budget was that we have a new city manager coming on board. And I fully expect, and my intention with, I guess, seconding this motion, is that that city manager, again, who, you know, finances her background, finances her expertise, that she's diving into this with our finance director, with our assistant city manager, with our department heads, and really looking at, as Ralph said, our chair of our finance committee, a new way of budgeting for the city. I expect her to dive in with the team to be analyzing this budget. I'm absolutely open for mid-course adjustments as part of the November review, as a part of the mid-year review. I expect her to also be working with our team on a long-term perspective for our budget to, you know, address the long-term financial sustainability that we've set as a priority. I just want to mention that I do absolutely support some of the comments that Councilmember Guinness mentioned about these workload indicators and evaluation of costs. I think we do, as part of our new way of doing business in Costa Mesa, we've got to get better about how we evaluate our services. A lot of the budget as is, is moving forward with the way we've provided services, maintaining the levels of services, but with a lot of cost savings, as our finance director mentioned. So I, in, from my perspective, this is about moving forward and spending the next year as well, looking very closely, continuing to look very closely at our spending across, across the board. We're not going to be able to answer, you know, the evaluation of all the parks and recreation programs in the next two weeks. We just can't. But I, we should over the next year. I support that. And I do want to say that I hope, so regarding a number of the additional funding requests from the police department, that's something that we are expecting to address no later than November, I think. I hope that we would prioritize the analysis of those requests, the total cost of those requests, and as we continue to learn. And one thing I had asked for was the strategic plan. I think it'd be great to get an update of the police department strategic plan in the context of where we are now and what we've already accomplished. My understanding is, is we're ahead of schedule in a lot of the accomplishments in that strategic plan. I take very seriously the concerns that the chief raised about existing equipment and I think especially the ability, the long-term ability to continue to build that program and recruit and retain the staff that you need. So as we continue to explore those items, I do, I do want to be sort of kept, I'll keep checking in, but kept in the loop on what we're learning there. And if we can address any of those items before November, let's try. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'll be supporting the motion with all the amendments. I want to express my sincere gratitude to the enormous amount of time, Ms. Telford, that you and your team have had to put into helping us to get to this point here. It was above and beyond anything that I think you could ever have imagined you would have to do at this point in your life. And, and every time one of us had a question or anybody asked some, you know, esoteric question, you did your best to try to find the answers. And I think your team has been working around the clock. I think we all know that. And you definitely have earned a break. So I understand that you'll soon be getting one. So it is, it has been very enlightening, this entire process. And I appreciate all of the expertise that you are bringing so that we can have a budget that is a more accountable budget, a budget that is created with the best practices of accounting and that has corrected many of the errors and mistakes that we had in terms of how we were not only just preparing our budgets, but how departments were allocating different items within different accounts. And those issues have been nearly all corrected. And that is going to help not only you, but every department head to be able to better manage their budgets. And certainly, it's going to help our, our HR department, our assistant city manager, and our new city manager to be able to, to manage better, which then allows us as a council to get back to what our real role is, policymaking. And so we should not ever be involved at this level of detail that we have been involved with regard to preparation of a budget. And so I'm grateful for all the work that you have put in. I'm grateful for the many, many hours that you have sat with, with myself and others to, to understand the process, to clarify misunderstandings, to help people to understand that actually there is funding for things when they thought there wasn't. And so I'm really grateful that you're willing to do that kind of level of work. It's a lot of work, and I appreciate it. And I felt it was important that you hear that directly from me. I think this budget, as, as many of the budgets that I have voted on in the past, is, it's frugal but functional. It's a budget that prioritizes public safety. 45 cents on the dollar is going to public safety. That is the number one priority for our community. If we don't have a safe community, we have a community that is going to be not a very comfortable community to live in. And all of the, the issues that have been discussed here tonight are very important. Everybody up here is very thoughtful and concerned about doing the right thing. It's unfortunate that, that things get politicized, but this is politics. We are all really hardworking, trying to do the right thing, trying to balance the interests, the interests of the community against the interests of the city staff, against the interests of the reality of the dollars that we have to spend, against the, the reality of, you know, we are also recovering from some decisions that were made before we all had the majority to vote on them. So it is a budget, I think, that, that does reflect the priorities of the council that were identified in our priority session. We're investing heavily in public safety. We're a department that should be growing, both in our police and our fire. We've taken the public safety departments here at this city from where we had eliminated all of our specialty divisions, where we were barely able to serve patrol and we hardly had any motor cops. We are now in a position where we celebrated our new canine that we have now. We celebrated the first woman canine officer. We celebrated that we opened a new fire station. We celebrated that we have now bike patrols. We have detective, more detectives now. We are back to doing more, more, not as much as we'd all like, trust me, I'd like it to have more, too, but community policing instead of just reactionary policing. We are now a department where people want to come and they want to be able to have a career here. Because just like in the legal profession or in engineering or planning or even accounting, you know, you start somewhere and you want to go where there's ability to promote and to have a whole diversity of tasks that you can perform as an employee there so that you can fulfill all of your goals in your career and you can develop as an employee. And that is what we're bringing back to our police department, our fire department, hopefully all of our departments. Because we want to have that robust, diverse, diversity of staff who have a diversity of skill sets and who can serve our community and our residents better. So I'm really proud of the work that we've done, and I'm proud of the work that we'll continue to do. We're some of the highest-paying police officers in the county. We're a destination department, finally, once again. And we will continue to support that effort because it's important to the quality of our city. We can't have everything. We can't have everything. I like, you know, some of my things that I like got cut out of the budget, but that's life, you know? I'd like a new kitchen at home right now, too, but I can't have that either. So we are working hard to prioritize the necessities, to prioritize doing things now that we can be ready, and planning now so we can be ready to build or to develop later. Prioritizing recreation, prioritizing learning, prioritizing public safety, and prioritizing economic development. That is very important. It's important to be able to be a destination city where businesses also want to come here, because it's a quality community, it has a good staff that people can work with, that they can get their businesses open promptly. So I'm very proud of the work that we've all done under very, very difficult situation, and I'm happy to support the motion. Call for the question.
Wait, wait.
Yep.
One second. I'm clarifying, is this only for item number one?
Right. Do you want to make additional motions?
Okay, all right. All right, so let me do that. We're going to test it and see if it works or not. If not, then I'll do a voice roll call vote.
It says voting is inactive.
Okay, so I'm going to do this.
So try again.
Okay.
I cleared the-
No, it won't do it. So, okay. Councilmember Mansour?
No.
I'm sorry, is it Councilmember Mar? Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Foley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
And Councilmember Guinness?
No.
Thank you. The motion carries 5-2 with Councilmembers Mansour and Guinness voting no.
Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Stevens, did you have another item?
Yeah. I'll just move the staff recommendations two through six.
Councilmember Mar, did you second?
I did second.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Mar seconded. Councilmember, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Telford?
I want to, can I interrupt you one second? I just want to clarify that, assuming that you're going to approve the energy services manager, we will need to bring back to you that job description and the salary resolution probably on July 2nd, so just so you know that.
Okay, call for the question.
Okay. I'm just going to have to again read it out loud if it's not working, I'm sorry.
Can we just raise our hands? All those in favor, raise your hand.
Okay, all those opposed? Okay. The motion carries 5-2 with Councilmembers Mansour and Guinness voting no.
And are there any addition, if there are any additional comments that anyone wanted to make, please check the queue. Councilmember Guinness?
Just real quickly, per Council, Mayor Protem Stevens' suggestion about a donate button, I would suggest we do that post haste as opposed to waiting till November to do that.
Agreed. Okay, we will adjourn the meeting, and Ms. Letturno, are we, are we having the meeting on the 25th?
We, we do need to have an adjourned regular meeting, because all the city business that was supposed to be done tonight, the other business was moved, so we have items that have to go and be approved before the end of June.
Okay. So Madam Mayor- We will adjourn the regular meeting of the Costa Mesa City Council to be held on Tuesday, June 25th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the council chamber, City Hall 77 Fair Drive, Costa Mesa. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.[1791.96][1791.96]